Good afternoon. The time is now 1:08 PM and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education regular meeting of December 13, 2022 is called to order. Mertz or there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment in person and virtually. We're going to start with the people in the room. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board and I will keep track of time and you'll be able to keep track of time in the room on this timer. We'll strictly follow the time limit so everyone has an opportunity to speak. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. You may be contacted later. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people and disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation, as I previously told you, will be in person. We'll begin with in person and then we will go to the people that registered before one o'clock for virtual participation. So, I will tell you the first person to speak and if you'll come to the board table at the end where the presenters are and then the person that's on deck. So, the first speaker is James Tarr and the second speaker is Alexis Ramsey. Is Mr. Tarr here?
James Tarr is the dean of Saginaw University.
Right. I don't see him, but I'm not... Mr. Tarr, James Tarr, he did a previous presentation.
He just thought he had to fill that out.
Yeah, okay. So, let's go to Alexis Ramsey. Is Alexis here? If you'll just come have a seat, that'd be great. And followed by Bree Morgenberg. I see Bree there. We'll be ready when you're ready.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexis Ramsey and I have been an educator for 25 years. I am now the executive director of We Care Foster Care, a nonprofit that provides educational opportunities and community-connected resources to children in foster care. In Michigan, there are over 10,000 children in foster care and their statistics are bleak. For example, in 2021, the four-year graduation rate was merely 39%, the lowest of any student group, and that's shockingly low. But, when you think about how often their education gets disrupted, it begins to make sense. Research estimates that students lose four to six months of academic progress every time they change schools. And, if you know that a foster kid, they change schools six, 10, many more times even through their K-12 experience. The math is not difficult. Years of learning are lost, in part because of these disruptive moves. And that's not all that's lost. Achievement is lost because placements change leads to untimely school transfers, which leads to courses being incomplete, credits are not awarded, and there's a failure of moving transfers and mismanagement of paperwork, plus widely varying district policies. Fosters are also dealing with the trauma that put them into foster care in the first place: severe abuse, neglect, drug dependency, and human trafficking. Disproportionate numbers suffer from a grim parade of mental health issues and most live in poverty and failing communities. It is unreasonable to expect a child to successfully navigate such a complicated and intertwined educational, welfare, and judicial system. Could you do it, even as an adult? We must do better. But where do we start? For example, an online comprehensive record system is needed that mirrors or replaces the child's cumulative record folder, CA-60, and is accessible to all relevant systems that provide support and care for a foster child. Educational records would include transcripts, records of student progress, IEP, attendance, standardized test scores. Social service records would include forms like the DH942, which identifies a foster child and their caseworker to schools. How can schools support fosters if they can't identify them in their community? Sadly, these forms are often missing or out of date. Such systems would also benefit the court because access to these records and communications between schools and social services will allow the court to make timely and better-informed decisions about a foster child's placement. We need to find solutions to support and care for our foster children so that they can be successful citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, three minutes is up. Thanks for coming. Okay. Bree Morgenberg, you're next, and followed by Stephanie Boone.
Hello, Bree Morgenberg from Isabella County. Today, I represent myself and my personal views as a mom and a woman. A woman by definition, defined by a vagina and female reproductive organs. It does not mean I'm homophobic. It means beliefs do not redefine words. It is mentally beneficial to our children to stop gaslighting them and confusing them to think otherwise. I imagine you wonder why I'm dressed like this. It is my rally and protest attire and today, I am protesting that a member here called "parents provocateurs," after standing in truth for our beliefs, values, and morality for our children. With that, I wonder... I wonder why our taxpayer dollars are being used to unconstitutionally discriminate against our beliefs, to desensitize our children, and to push sexuality on them. Why would the MDE support this and keep parents out of the equation while simultaneously not requiring partner schools to report improvements in literacy? Does sexual reading material make our children more literate? I wonder when board members will be held accountable for making our children perfect targets for pedophiles, encouraging and enabling them to be prey upon our children as they are pleasurable perversion. I wonder if you are aware of studies that prove sexuality is actually damaging, such as the following. This is from the National Library of Medicine. Studies on the effect of sexuality have shown induced neurological alterations similar to drug abuse and it serves as a role as a mediator in reward memory and can induce a hypersexual syndrome. So, I really wonder, if the school allows a child to read pornographic books and the child rapes another student, is the school held accountable for serving as the catalyst to the child's various manifestations of cerebral dysfunction known as hypofrontal syndrome? I wonder if you now consider sexuality promotion to be abusive to growing minds that are already prone to mental disparities. I wonder if you're more interested in assisting the health concerns of groomers or the mental health of our children. If your interest is to promote wokeness, is this due to the suffering from neurological dysfunction? I want to share with you my plea today. Join me if you choose. Heavenly Father, thank you for the provocateurs. Please fill them with hope to stand firm in your word and science that proves harm to our children. Your children, fill women and men with strength to not grow weary. Heal the school boards and persons that suffer from hypofrontal syndrome, from overexposure to sexuality, and from any traumas that they may have experienced. Bring us healing and put a shield of protection around our children. Empower our amazing morally righteous teachers to rise up. Bring morality back to education. See justice through. In Jesus's name, amen. Stop promoting sexuality to children.
Thank you for your comments.
This concludes my protest. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Boone, followed by Justin Eagle, or Ely, maybe? If I mispronounce your name, please correct me when you come to the table.
My name is Stephanie Boone and I am from Ada over in Kent County and I have six children. I am a former public schools K-12 educator and I help my husband run our two dental practices in the Grand Rapids area. And I am here as a concerned parent because of the book issues that we're having going on in our public schools and the lack of clear policy related to protecting young children's minds. I am proud to be here with my friend Bree, who is Wonder Woman today, and like Bree, I wonder some things as well. I wonder if you all are aware that pornography harms a child's precious brain. It actually changes neural pathways. Pornography harms a child's view of sex. How it is on the screen is not how it is in real life. I wonder if you know that pornography harms a child's view of people. Do you know that pornography harms a child's quality of life? I wonder if you know that pornography causes children to harm other children. When young kids see pornography, they practice pornography on other children. And if you look on page two, I have the definition highlighted in yellow, the Merriam-Webster definition of pornography is "the depiction of erotic behavior as in pictures or in writing intended to cause sexual excitement." And if you look at the resources that I've given you, and there are many more and I'm happy to help with that, but there are plenty of resources to show you that these harmful and age-inappropriate books are in our public schools by the hundreds. They've been found, they've been vetted, they've been rated according to systems that make much more sense than clearly the systems that are being used today in our schools. I work with school, with parents with schools in Forest Hills and in Lowell in Kent County. And in Forest Hills, the difference I've seen is that they are on the offensive and they are asking, they're actually asking for help to get this smut out of our schools. Lowell is on the defensive. They continue to call me a liar and they are in denial. So, we've got two different sides of the coin there. I'm asking for you all to come up with some clear policies and recommendations for our K-12 schools because clearly, they're looking for something to follow and they're not quite sure what at this point. They know we have a problem and they don't know what to do about it. They want to follow policy, they want to know what to do with it. So, if you could please give them some guidance, please protect our children's growing minds. I'm happy to help in any way that I can and my name, my email address, and my phone number are there for you. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Justin, is it E-A-L-Y?
How do you say the name? E-A-L-Y?
Yes, I think that is it.
That's Ely.
E-A-L-Y. Okay. Thanks for helping me.
No, thank you. Thank you for getting that correct. Good mor-- I mean, good afternoon, everyone. Can I get started?
Yeah, you can.
There you go, thank you. So, my name is Justin Ely. I am from Detroit, Michigan. I graduated Western Michigan University in 2019 with a bachelor's in social work and since then, I have been working in Kalamazoo, Michigan with K through 12, doing restorative justice, also known as restorative practices. And that's why I'm here to talk to you today about the importance of restorative practices. And so, I have been working with K through 12 alternative learning middle schools in Kalamazoo for about three years now. And the number of relationships that we were able to repair between staff and students, students and students, students and teachers, teachers and parents have been amazing. It's just for me to experience that in myself. In 2020, we had over an 80% success rate when it comes to students, parents, teachers, staff coming together and repairing harm and restoring those relationships. Restorative practices focus on relationships, building relationships within the buildings, building relationships within the community. So, when an issue happens in the community or in the school, it is easier and it's more comfortable for everybody to come together in that community, repair that harm and restore that relationship. I am asking for support, right, any way possible to not only have restorative practice continuing KPS, but also to look at spending around the state of Michigan. My overall goal is to hopefully go back to Detroit, right? Take what I learned in Kalamazoo and apply that, right? Not only in Detroit, but also surround the cities, right? I do, I also do training, right? I also do restorative practice, restorative justice trainings, and professional developments, right? And so, I am asking for more support as it relates to supporting the teachers, supporting the staff, supporting the parents, supporting the community. When conflict happens, Griffin Place, which is the organization that I work is, work at, will be willing to come in and just help facilitate those conversations, facilitate those interactions, and most definitely restore those relationships because that is important, right? Something that I do want to bring up, that I also worked at an alternative learning school in Kalamazoo, and even that mindset, that restorative mindset, it works, right? I have had students that unfortunately, they don't feel comfortable talking to other teachers, but because I'm coming in with a whole different mindset, they always default back to me, right? And so, I do want to thank you all. I did come out from Kalamazoo and I'm actually heading back. I do want to thank you all for having me come and speak for these brief minutes. Thank you all. You all have a blessed rest of the day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Cap-tine, followed by Jimmy Jones. Please correct the way I pronounced your name.
It's okay. Everyone does it. Cap-tine.
Cap-tine.
Cap-tine, duh.
Thank you for that.
So, I'm Katie Cap-tine. Good afternoon. I am coming to you from the west side of the state, the Muskegon Heights District. I have taught there twice, once previously when we were under emergency management and most recently again this year without RTAB. And Governor Whitmer removed RTAB previously, recently, last year, and now I've seen the district and what has ended up happening. I can see its demise. COVID was bad enough for my students. This is worse. They are going and spending the majority of their class periods in the library, two to three classes at a time. Education is not occurring at all. Adults are busy arguing. Our boards are busy arguing and fighting for this education that is not occurring. They had the wool pulled over their eyes by a full-service charter management company that has not followed through. I am no longer employed as of 10 days ago. I have been vocal. I have been trying to get the state's attention, anyone and everyone who could possibly come and help. I am one person, but all it takes is one of you to hear me and to help. We are at our end and we, our hands are tied completely and yet, although I am gone, I am still here fighting for those kids. They have so much potential and it is not being given to them. One teacher watching two to three class periods and most of them are not certified teachers. They are putting support staff in their rooms. They are doing virtual classes where they can, but we don't have enough computers to be able to do that. And it's the same programs that are being used during COVID. There are options to just click through, to not have any mastery whatsoever, not getting any proficiency, and this is not what our kids need. It is neglectful, to say the least. And our district is unique and it needs unique opportunities and solutions. And I know that we have those. We don't need other people viewing this as an opportunity to prey on a community like ours, to exploit it, to exploit our kids. And that's what continues to happen and that's the cycle of dependency we've been stuck in. We need control. I do believe in that at the local level, but I do believe there needs to be more checks and balances. We are losing all of our staff. Potentially, they may not get paid on the 15th. That was the most recent occurrence and why I'm here today, because I am still fighting for the kids, I'm fighting for my staff, and something needs to change now. And I'm asking any of you, if there is a possible resolution in any way to assist this district, whether I'm there or not, please reach out and help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final in-person speaker is Jimmy Jones.
I can go ahead?
Yep.
Well, my name is Jimmy Jones. I'm out of Detroit, Michigan, and here on behalf of Park West Foundation. And I serve as a consol-- educational consultant and researcher as well, but one of the issues or some of the issues I'm here to talk about is the non-academic now, you know, research issues that I've seen with foster youth, especially young adult foster youth. I've taken multiple youth who kind of fell through the cracks at that tender age of 17, 16, 17, where dropout, a lot of dropouts, decisions is happening. And it's by force, not by choice oftentimes, but I just wanted to bring to attention the need for improved coordinate, coordination, a better coordination of efforts across different entities and nonprofit agencies, government agencies, the welfare system, I mean, the child foster youth system, the school system, there's just so many cracks in it. Although a lot of these policies are being put into place, I'm not sure if, I am sure that there's so many gaps. And I know with Park West Foundation, their, their role has been, Blue Bay, Park West Foundation Blueberrys, Blue Babys role has been very crucial in filling those gaps that, them cracks that fall in between these agencies. And so many youth in those cracks that fall in those cracks, they're being met with suicide or a drug addiction or the criminal justice system. And it's all, all of them are just young babies and they're navigating life, so buying cars, getting healthy, figuring out that they qualify for certain stipends and money and understanding health insurance. They're, they're just fighting for their life. And what I realized, even my role of just coming in and even taking something to my home, like, they're being treated as adults by the people that's supposed to go to social workers, different things like that. And they're, and they're being faced with so many obstacles and attitudes and although you have workers, we still have a hu-- that's, that's there and getting paid specifically to serve them, there's a lot of interpersonal dynamics that you don't see on, on no, on no reports or statistics. That's the actual human side of it where I'm watching, when I go in as an advocate with these young people, I'm watching the attitudes or the favoritism of this personality of a youth is liked more than this personality, so this person has an easier path to accessing the resources that is delegated to them. And those decisions and those little obstacles, the outcome that we not able to see in the statistics is that, that's that one attitude or the roll eyes or that smirk or that non-verbal communication that is not accounted for is what could shut a child off from not even caring about accessing anything. And then they go on this, you know, path of male adaptive behaviors and I, that's where I usually find them at and I try to coach them back up or empower them back to a space. So, if anything is taken from here, which I know it will be, it's just that let's really see if we can focus on finding those cracks or those missing statistics, data points that's not often found on the, on the sheets or in the, when we go to Google. And I just hope that we can improve the coordination of efforts across all agencies.
Thank you for your comments. We are now going to virtual public comment. Looks like there are a couple people in the lobby for that. These people have pre-registered to provide public comment. Mike, will you let the first person in the virtual lobby? Hello, caller? Are you on the line?
Hello.
Can you give me your name and where you're calling from, please? And then I will keep a timer here and you can provide your three minutes of comment. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Abashay Graywoods and I am from Detroit.
Please continue.
Okay. So, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Abashay Graywoods and I am a former foster youth. I just became a bachelor of social work and I am currently a foster youth advocate and the president of Empowering Foster Youth Through Technology, which is a foster youth-based advocacy group that provides advocacy throughout the state of Michigan. I am here to support the foster youth on the panel who work tirelessly to create social and political reform for youth and care and their education. Conversations surrounding education are necessary for both their improvement and the development of improved services for foster youth. As you will hear in today's meeting, there are stories that need to be heard so that you can both empathize and understand what we see or have continuously seen that negatively impact education as it relates to foster youth and care. Unfortunately, my education was impacted several times due to being neglected by those who were supposed to care for me at some of the most critical moments in my childhood. When my case was opened, I begged my case workers not to return me back home because I was sure that I'd be faced with a multitude of barriers that prevented me from achieving my future goals, education, and my overall safety and security. Unfortunately, despite my wishes, my case was closed a month after me and several of my siblings were illegally removed from my mother's custody and placed into my younger brother's foster home and it failed to tip to what is called a safety removal. During that time away from home, the DHS failed to report to our schools what had happened, failed to provide us with updates on the current situation, failed to inform everyone involved of what had taken place, which resulted in me missing over two consecutive months of school. It brought my high GPA to a staggering two-point grade average. I had to enroll in credit recovery, was almost not able to graduate high school. My daughter's father also filed a full custody motion against me, almost resulting in me moving full custody of my child. In addition to that, my siblings were labeled as shoring and my mother was almost arrested. I strongly know and believe had my proper steps, I strongly know and believe that if proper steps had been taken to prevent these things from happening through prioritizing my education, proper communication, quality, informed training to workers, and having an actual safety plan in place and listening to our needs versus their wants, I and my siblings and many youth like me will not have to endure these traumatic experiences that changed our lives negatively. If I was listening to prior to my case being closed, I would have never experienced any of these things. I pray moving forward that foster youth voices and experiences can help the government with their very critically needed social, educational, and policy reform for those in care, open or closed case. It is necessary and vital that foster youth are at the table when these decisions are being made surrounding our wellbeing. Thank you for allowing me time to speak and I look forward to future conversations, updates, and opportunities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, is there a caller on the line? If I may have your name, where you're calling from, and your three minutes of comments, Is there a caller on the line?
Um, I just went, so that's why.
Oh, feel free to hang up and then join by the webs, the live stream if you, if you would like to still continue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there another caller on the line?
Hello?
Hi, may I have your name?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
May I have your name?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, if I--
Judith New?
Okay, and--
Judith New, N-E-W.
Thank you for calling, Judith. May I have your three minutes of comments, please?
Thank you. So, good afternoon. I am an educational advocate with Michigan Children's Law Center, assigned to assist youth under the jurisdiction of the Wayne County Juvenile Court. The following are points I would like this board to consider. One, the youth speaking to you today have experienced the malfunction of systems in MDE and deserve your attention. I've been involved in meetings with them over the past several months and have been shocked to find it is possible to leave a residential placement after a year with no transferable credits towards graduation. Two, all youth in residential placements in the DHHS system deserve to be educated by accredited institutions. I believe this responsibility lies with MDE as much as DHHS. This is foundational to the lack of transferable credit. Three, MDE should be a stakeholder in transition plans for youth and care, including the transition plans in school systems and DHHS systems. I also believe these plans should be provided to the court of jurisdiction. Transportation should be more than a bus pass. I had a student who was consistently late for school first hour, come to find out the bus system would pass up his stock when the bus was full. This was an even greater issue when the weather was bad. Five, all school systems should have access to surrogate parents. I have been told by more than one school district, they did not have the budget to train surrogate parents. And six, MDE should allow LGALs, Guardians Ad Lightum, access to the Michigan data hub to facilitate and monitor the educational status of their clients in care. My request for this access was made in July of 2022 with no progress to date. Just being able to provide transcripts from one district to another would be very helpful. Being able to monitor my client's progress would hopefully ward off future disasters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling. Mike, have all the callers who previously registered and are on the line had the opportunity to speak?
That's correct.
Okay, this concludes public comment at 1:38 PM.
Thank you to all those of you who presented public comment today. The next item on the agenda is presentation on the education of children in foster care. This presentation will provide an overview of residential foster care in Michigan and share the educational experience of young adults who have been placed in residential foster care settings. This is-- This is an informational presentation and no board action is required. We welcome our presenters as they gather here in the room. We'll give them a quick moment. I'll give you time to get settled.
All right, thank you. Dr. Rice, and thank you, Board, for the opportunity to present here today.
Let me introduce you if I could.
I thought you did.
No, no, I did not. I wanted to get you, I want you to get situated. We welcome our presenters. Mr. Kyle Garan, Deputy Superintendent of Division of Finance and Operations. Sabah Gabray, Program Director of Park West Foundation. Tim Click, Director of the Bureau of In-Home Services, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And we have some young people with us as well, do we not? Okay. And so we have Brianna Cook, Christian Good, Christian Randall, Virtual, and I believe Shania Norfleet cannot join us today, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. And they are with the Empowering Foster Youth Through Technology. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you, Board, for the opportunity to be here today. We're excited to share some experiences and some work that has gone on around the quality of, and the opportunity of educational opportunities for foster care youth. This first picture here are from students from the Park West College Prep Class of 2019, and this is, as we get started today, is our, kind of our grounding focus, these students right here. These young adults are the catalysts for us bringing this presentation to you today. And we have Chris and Brianna and Chris online as well to share some of their direct experiences in foster care. Earlier this year, thanks to Board Member Tilly, I was fortunate enough to participate in a series of meetings organized by the Park West Foundation, Sab and her team, and led by the amazing young people, some of which are here today. Along with MDHHS representatives, I learned firsthand the significant challenges these young adults face as they try to access the educational opportunities they deserve. Our presentation today will provide a brief overview of the foster care system here in Michigan, how the Park West Foundation and young adults harness their experiences and their voices for change, highlight a few of the positive steps that have taken place based on young adult recommendations, and hopes for continued work and partnership together to improve educational opportunity for youth in foster care. And with that, we're going to turn it over to Tim and our MDHHS team.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for having us here today and allowing the department an opportunity to present some information to you regarding foster care and children in congregate settings. At the Children's Services Agency, we always begin our presentations with a slide depicting the priorities for the Children's Services Agency. And these include timely reunification and permanency, keeping children safe with their family's safety and well-being of children while they are in care, and ensuring equitable practice in our child welfare system. We begin here because these priorities root us and guide us in the decision-making process that we undertake to create a child well-being system in the state of Michigan, a system that provides services to our citizens that meet their needs, that are provided equitably, and that improve a family's well-being overall. Thank you. So here is sort of a condensed overview of how a youth may enter the foster care system in Michigan. We begin with a call to centralized intake. Centralized intake is actually under the purview of the Bureau that I am the director of. The referral is assessed and looked at from a lens of whether or not it meets the statutory requirement for an investigation. If it does meet the statutory requirement for an investigation, it is assigned to a local county. An investigator goes out and makes a determination of whether or not there's a preponderance of evidence regarding an allegation of abuse or neglect. If there is a preponderance, then services are provided to the family. In best-case scenario, the family is successful in the completion of services and in benefiting from the services that are provided, and the case closes. In some instances, that doesn't happen, the family doesn't successfully complete services, and a petition is then filed with the court, and the child is placed in foster care. Just for notation services, it's Section 8D, 1E of the CPL, and Section 17 that governs sections 17 and 18 that governs the petition for removal. If services are provided to the family, after removal, always, the department's goal is reunification of the child with the family. If the family makes progress, the child is returned to the parents, and services may continue with the family for a brief period of time after return, and then the case is closed. It's important to note that the process of writing, submitting, and approving a petition is different in each county in Michigan. But it's also important to know that of the number of investigations that are conducted in the state of Michigan, only 1% of those investigations result in the filing of a petition for removal. In that process, it's the CPS worker that files the petition with the court, and the CPS worker is responsible for attending all hearings that are related to that jurisdiction until adjudication or until the allegations are determined to be proven by the court. Once the petition is authorized, the case management responsibility transfers to a foster care worker, and each county has a protocol in place, we call it the five-day packet, each county has a protocol in place for the transfer of a CPS case to a foster care worker, where there is discussion regarding the need for services to the family, any relevant information that might assist the foster care worker in making decisions regarding helping the family to succeed. So this slide is rather data-dense, I would say, and the reason that we present this is just sort of a level set, I would say. This is a depiction of the total number of children that are in foster care in Michigan. It's important to present this information because it sort of tees up some data that we're going to give you later on. But you'll note that there are just over 10,000 children in care in Michigan, 90, under the supervision of the department, I guess I should say, not just in care, that about 9,600 are in out-of-home care. That we're trending rather, we're trending down in our entries, in our exits, in our out-of-home care, in our removals over a period of time. And this trend is largely in part due to the efforts that the department has undertaken in areas such as front-end redesign, where we are developing a structured decision-making tool for centralized intake that helps us to match an allegation with facts through a lens of anti-bias, and helps us to identify barriers to a family's success earlier in the process. We also have some prevention services in home services that operate throughout counties in Michigan, and these help not only to prevent removal, but also help to return children to their families sooner. It's important to note that all of the efforts that the department undertakes regarding prevention services or the development of the tools that we use are informed by the various stakeholders in Michigan, which includes in courts, we consult with entities such as Chapin Hall and others. But most importantly, this work is informed by the voices of the children and the parents who have lived experience with Michigan's child welfare system. Recently, I was having some conversations with a group of people, and I thought it would be important to just sort of mention to you briefly here, there is a, sometimes a perception in Michigan that children go to residential or congregate care because we can't find another placement for them. And I just want to be very clear that that does not happen in Michigan. We can use shelter care while we are seeking a permanent placement or a more long-term placement for children, but we don't place children in residential or congregate care simply because we don't have any other placements. So again, here's another slide that's a little bit data-heavy, but it's important for you to see because this demonstrates that the total CCI, or congregate care, number of children, number of children, I apologize, the number of children in congregate care in Michigan is only about 4.7% of the total number of children in care in Michigan. During this time period that we are displaying to you, November 21 to October 22, you can see those numbers, and we either stayed steady or we reduced by a very small amount. But in 2018 and 2019, we had around 1,000 youth in Michigan in congregate care. And so the department undertook some work prior to QRTP to take a look at youth being referred to residential care, and we worked to identify more community-based services so that youth could stay in a foster care placement in the community as opposed to having to go to a residential. These numbers that you're looking at now, they demonstrate to us that our work to identify community-based services that would be more in tune with our current population in congregate care would be beneficial, as this population, as you can see, has remained fairly steady in both foster care and in juvenile justice. Thank you so much. And so here is a bit of a blurb on MDHHS education policy. And I'll not read it to you, I'll leave that to you, but just as a note, FOM stands for Foster Care Online Manual. I think it's important to point out that here at the department, we recognize that the majority of children who are in congregate care or CCI are not in a CCI that is in the community from which they were removed. We are currently working with Chapin Hall to analyze data regarding the removal of children in the district that they are removed from, and the distance from the removal district to the residential where they are placed. This will help us identify regions where we need specific numbers of CCI beds while we create a request for proposal to better keep youth closer to their county of removal and in their school of origin. A highlight to this policy is that school-aged children must be registered for and attending school within five school days of initial placement in foster care or any change in placement, including while they are at a CCI or any emergency placement. The Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, is the federal requirement from 2015 which states, excuse me, which requires state education agencies to, again, I'm sorry, I'm just really right, education to provide stability for students who are in foster care. This includes requiring that school staff collaborate with child welfare staff to make a best-interest determination for school placement. ESSA requires that every school district identify a foster care liaison, and that that liaison is required to collaborate with foster care staff when considering school placement and to help arrange transportation when needed. Children entering foster care or changing foster care placements must continue their education in the school district of origin whenever possible and when in their best interest. The proximity of a caregiver home to the child's school is to be considered, must be considered by the department when placing or changing every child's placement. If remaining in the school of origin is not for some reason in the child's best interest, we are required to document the reason why it's not in the child's best interest. We also must document the school that they are enrolled in, in their current residence within five school days, and that we transfer the educational records of the child to the new school and ensure that it was properly completed. When a child in foster care has a school change, public schools are required to request a copy of the CA-60, and from the child's previous school, this must be done within 14 days after enrolling the transfer of the student. The school, the sending school must forward a copy of the records within 30 days of the request. If the child's foster care case does not contain the most recent school records, such as a report card, or a discipline report, or an IEP, the caseworker must request the copies of the records from the last school attended within five days. This ensures that the child will be placed in appropriate classes and receive any needed special accommodations immediately without having to wait for a transfer of the full CA-60.
Chris, you're in, Chris.
You're in.
Okay.
Okay.
So, more policy to review. Some of you may know that we have children in congregate care that are both part of the foster care system and are also part of the juvenile justice system. So what we're showing to you right now are the juvenile justice residential manuals, and there are some items that I would point out to you, that each facility that operates its own school must provide special education services to any student who has previously enrolled in a special education program or is referred for education services. That each facility that operates its own school must develop and implement an individualized education program for each student determined to have a special education disability, and that residential juvenile justice facilities providing educational service must prepare and use lesson plans to administer services to each youth in general and special education programs. These plans include written daily plans, special and general education plans, and they must be submitted to facility staff for review and approval prior to implementation. I think it's important to note that of the JJ population, MDHHS supervises just a very small portion of that population, that the larger part of that population is under the jurisdiction of the court. So moving on to residential contract requirements, one of the things, the last bullet on here, number two, provide a minimum of a half-time educational specialist position for every eight youth. The educational specialists set up the school plan, they coordinate with the school, they may set up tutoring, for instance, they might be the contact for behavioral needs of a child in care, and they are responsible for the notification of transfers in and out of a school district, and they request the transcripts. This is rather long.
Okay, we can skip that, we'll move on.
Okay, all right, so that'll end this particular portion. So rather than get into the, just consulting with Kyle here, rather than get into the next slide, which is very dry regarding contracts, we'll just skip that, we'll provide it in the presentation to you, and I will turn it over to Kyle.
Just real briefly, we're going to turn it over to Sab and our young adults. Some of the support that MDE provides for foster youth and foster care, as Tim mentioned earlier, all LEAs are required via the Every Student Succeeds Act to identify a foster care point of contact locally, so that is the individual within the district who's supposed to be the navigator of sorts, help youth that are in foster care once they've been identified to navigate the school district and help meet their needs educationally and otherwise. The department also provides a dedicated webpage, we started in 2016, that has foster care-specific information, not only for staff and LEAs, but for other practitioners in the MDHHS sphere, as well as nonprofit organizations. One piece that, as was mentioned earlier, I think one of our commentators, one of the public commentators mentioned too, is helping to identify youth that are in foster care in communities and working with Sab and listening to our young adults. That is not always an easy thing. People don't walk around with a sign or a marker that identifies them as they may be in foster care, so we're working with SEPI and MDHHS to have a better use of the data that we do collect and other means to be able to help identify youth that may be in foster care, as well as the point of contacts piece, where one of the things I learned as part of our conversations is, you know, young adults want to be able to have access to the information and navigate themselves, and that was a barrier before, that they didn't have access to who those individuals were, in their schools that they're in, to help them support, and so we've made that available. But the use of data in a different way is important, and something that we're doing differently to help support districts identifying youth for foster care who may need services. Also requires LEAs to develop and submit a foster care transportation plan that identifies how the district will transport students across LEA county and state boundaries as And then jointly with MDHHS, the department provides a variety of joint changings annually. These are just a quick list of some that we provide, but- These are just a quick list of some that we provide, but these trainings are important to provide throughout the year and in various formats due to the transitional nature of the staff and roles that are supporting youth through experienced foster care, providing these trainings, support LEA foster liaisons, child or foster staff on the DHHS side, jurors through the state court administrative office, so the court staff that are involved in young adults' lives, and other key stakeholders to ensure that people have relevant, up-to-date information and practices and interventions and supports. And with that, I'm going to skip that because it's just very, just additional trainings in your slides and I will turn it over to Sab and our young adults.
Thank you so much, and I think we have Chris connected virtually, so Chris, you can start now if you can hear us.
Yes, am I able to be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. My name is Christian Randall, I am Director of Youth Advocacy for FY Tech, and what FY Tech stands for is Empowering Foster Youth Through Technology, is an organization led by youth who have lived expertise of foster care and supported by Park West Foundation. In 2005, Park West Foundation founders Albert and Misty Schegelin listed to voices of foster youth and decided to invest in youth-centered creative, innovative, and lasting solutions that could address urgent needs of foster youth. In July 2018, our youth leaders selected to campaign a policy recommendation by Northwestern High School senior Penny Richards, who had envisioned for MDHHS to digitize older youth services and allow youth to access benefits, resource, and information. Penny's solution also met the expectations of Every Student Succeeds Act, which is a federal law that requires transparency and online access of students' records and assessment for both foster youth and/or legal parents in education.
Our team held several follow-up meetings with MDHHS administrators regarding Penny's proposal between 2018 and 2020, formalized the FY Tech name in 2020, and launched a successful campaign to support older foster youth during the pandemic. We continued to invest our own self-development by facilitating our own virtual hub in summer 2021 and 2022. The initiative allowed 25 current and former youth leaders in foster care to provide resources and training for over 400 youth and workers. In partnership with Detroit Employment Solutions Corporation, also known as Grow Detroit Young Talent, on February 25, 2022, our team launched a convenient-to-end non-accredited high school enrollment of students in residential placement. We invited key stakeholders, including Department of Education and Department of Health and Human Services, who are working with us to make sure the voices of youth with lived expertise is included and used to help improve Michigan's education standards for children and youth in foster care. May 2020 was quite difficult for us. We lost Cornelius Frederick, 16, and Javar Harrell, 21. Javar worked closely with Park West Foundation College Prep and FY Tech. He regularly volunteered to support other youth and how he lived his life complemented how our team wanted to define our values. We rededicated our organizational values in summer 2020 as follows: love, respect, family, faith, community service, compassion, forgiveness, and self-accountability.
As I said earlier before, I'm Christian Randall. I entered foster care in Michigan when I was 12 years old. I was placed in a foster home with the single father of an 11-year-old boy who attended regular school. For some reason, I stayed in the home but never was enrolled in any type of school for a year. I was never enrolled in no schooling, but the boy was. When I was between 13 and 17 years old, I moved among several residential placements and I've also attended school. Sometimes I was in school on-site in the residential placement and one time I was allowed to leave residential to attend a public school. I moved and attended school as I was told to do by my workers and staff. In summer 2021, I was inspired by my schoolwork and the youth advocacy that I was doing with Ms. Sabah, and I wanted to get on, you know, on track for dual enrollment with college classes. In order to start my dual enrollment, I needed my transcript. After months of emails, calls, and workers' efforts, I found no credits. My education surrogate attorney, Rod Johnson, followed up and sent letters requesting my transcript from all the schools I attended. Even still, I had earned no credits on record and at least one of my schools had lost my entire student record file. Now, when my peers are getting ready to go to college and I'm being asked to start high school all over again, from 12 years old to 17 years old, I did everything I was told when it came to my education, but no one took the time to explain to me what it means to graduate from high school, how credits are earned, and what it means if workers move you before you have an opportunity to take your final test. How am I supposed to figure out how a normal school year works when I have always moved in the middle of it? And studies show 70% of foster youths like myself want to go to college, but only 10% do while only 3% to 4% graduate from college. In 2021, 39.51% of Michigan's foster youth cohort graduated in four years, comparing to 80.47% of their peers in the general population.
Shanaya Norfleet couldn't be here today, but she did give permission for me to tell her story on her behalf. My name is Shanaya Norfleet and I'm 20 years old. When I got in foster care, I was nine years old. I used to wear the traditional Muslim women's scarf to cover my head, the hijab. When I was removed from my family due to abuse and neglect, my family gave me a religious book, the Quran, which was passed down from my great-grandmother, her gold necklace with religious symbols and a prayer rug. When I arrived at the first residential placement, I was told the prayer rug, the Quran, and the gold necklace would have to be locked away for safekeeping. But everything was stolen by staff. I was never able to see these priceless pieces of family heritage again. In many placements, I was bullied by both youth and staff for wearing the hijab and eventually I stopped altogether. There were a lot of rules that took away our freedom to do normal things people took for granted. I was restrained for simple things like not clearing the hallway in time to enter my room that would lock outside for hours at a time with no bathroom access. Youth had no voice in residential placement, which is why I'm glad my story is being told today. I tried to keep a journal and keep record of what was happening to me, but even that was taken from me. I moved between dozens of residential and group home placements throughout the state of Michigan and once in the state of Wisconsin. I didn't even know I had left Michigan until I arrived in Madison, Wisconsin. I'm 20 now and still struggling to graduate high school because there was no one focused on tracking my education. By now, I should have been graduating high school with my peers and attending college. It's a reality that's hard to explain to normal people who are not subjected to a life of constantly moving. I still do not have my transcript to this day. My name is Brianna Cook and this is my story now. I've been in and out of foster care since age five. I used to have regular visits with my grandmother, who took interest in my education early. She would ask how school was going and I honestly didn't know what to tell her. I was lost. I moved around between several elementary schools so often that I had no idea what the other kids were doing. Workers often told my parents where and when I was moving and the school I would be attending, but they never asked them to contribute their thoughts or ideas on the decisions that were already made for me. Workers never let my parents know that they still had the legal authority to make my medical and educational decisions. I finally was in the Roseville School District where I made friends and where I was catching up with my classes when I was told I could no longer stay in the same school, no matter how much I begged. I finally, or I was moved an hour away into a different county in the middle of the semester, disrupting my entire life again. My new foster parents were extremely strict and wanted to redesign my identity in every way imaginable. I wasn't allowed to wear sweats, slacks, and I was told how to wear my hair, and they believed my entire existence had to fit into the image they had for me. I was suffocating and losing myself. I felt more like a property than a human being with feelings and a mind of my own. This was the worst place I had ever lived in and I ended up running away through the window of my bedroom after my foster dad attacked my little brother.
Hi, my name is Christian Good. I was four years old, my mother passed away and I joined the foster care system. I grew up moving around among a lot of different residencies and shelters. In these places, I got used to the friendships and the quick relationship ending quickly. Every time my worker comes and tells me, "Come on, pack your bags, it's time to go." Most of the time, I never had no idea where I was going till actually we got to that new place. I lived in the placements in Wayne, Kalamazoo, Grand Rapids, and many more placements throughout of Michigan. At 15, I completed my visit successfully with my memorial family and they wanted to adopt me. I thought everything was going to be perfect and I was discharged from residential facilities. My family was teaching me, my family was teaching me how to build a home from ground up all over again, how to ride a dirt bike and many more things that I've been wanting to learn my whole life. I thought everything was stable. Three weeks later, I was in my room in my underwear playing a game and I heard an old residential staff call my name out and say, "Chris, come on, let's go." My old staff and the police were standing in the living room waiting on me to take me back to a residential facility. My adoption mother felt that I wasn't accepting the moral religion as she expected that I was supposed to. No one told me that how I reacted towards someone, religion, was a big problem. I had no idea that it was an issue until I saw my old staff and the police wanting to take me out of their home. At 17, my aunt took me in and we were both not prepared for me to live with her successfully. I was locked up in placements, I wasn't locked up in placements anymore and I couldn't get enough of the freedom that I was able to go out and walk, get away for free, and see the world. My auntie, my auntie wanted me to understand the structure of her home and the ideal of what she had for me going on, but I never had the chance to learn how to balance my freedom with the responsibilities after being in a high, secure placement my whole life. There are things that, there are things that my aunt expected that I couldn't expect for myself. One afternoon, I was, one afternoon, I saw the police and my workers outside of my aunt's apartment's parking lot. When I saw them coming into my aunt's house, then I knew I had to just go ahead and pack my bags and get ready to go to another residential facility. I enjoyed playing basketball, although, yeah, I enjoyed it in a residential facility. My coach told me one day that I had to do one thing, which was to crutch my credits up so I can graduate on time. That was the first time I heard anything about credits in high school. I was focused on graduating high school and finishing my residential program. When I got done and completed the program successfully, I was told I couldn't discharge because I didn't finish high school. There were over 100 youth in the facility and only three of us graduated in 2020. The other two were graduates or juvenile delinquents who came from a normal high school in the community. I believe I am a leader, I became a leader in the placement because I was there for three years in and out and the younger boys looked up to me a lot. I helped staff manage any younger boys. It wasn't usual for staff to use force when it was necessary to punish or make children and youth follow the rules. I watched a lot of children and youth break down because of aggression and they wanted to run away and self-harm. A few months, a few months went by, I turned 18 on May, after May 5. I found out of watching the news that one of the younger boys that looked up to me had ended up dying to cardiac arrest due to a staff restraint. I was really upset, I didn't know how to, I was really upset, I let my anger get the best of me, not knowing what else to do, and all the other younger kids followed me. The staff called the police and had me kicked out of the placement because I started a riot. After three weeks later, I was sent to jail and I was stayed in there. My foster care case got, ended up getting closed and I was set free. At, at that, and out of all that time that I lost, the same time would not be telling me what to do next. Before, before I could even go, before I couldn't even go to the bathroom, I asked him for permission and at 18, I couldn't find anyone from the foster care to show me how to get into voluntary foster care or anything to go to college. I didn't have no transcript or proof of graduation. I got, I got some help from my family members to try to get me back on my feet and, and station with workers during COVID-19. But a year later, I got into a horrible car crash and I was hospitalized for three months. I was not able to do anything for myself and I had to learn how to walk again. I called my former foster care worker that helped me many times and I couldn't get nowhere. I had no idea what was going on or anything that was available. I didn't, I had no idea there was anything available to help older kids in the foster care youth during the pandemic until a month ago, which was too late. I am 20 now and I'm expecting to attend college for the first time next month with the help of the Park West Foundations. We have also finally got the, we have also finally got the help to get my original transcript for the first time. I am still struggling to fit into normal society. I'm trying to figure out how to recover from being institutionalized my whole life. Keep in mind, 20% of the foster youth find themselves homeless on the day they age out of the current and former foster youth have almost twice as, almost, almost twice as trauma as a combat veteran.
We identified common challenges to academic and social success to be frequent moves, not knowing what's going on and what's happening, lack of educational and record-keeping standards, enrollment and curriculum that does not lead towards high school graduation, making public school attendance a privilege that has to be earned, making semi-independent living preparations a privilege that has to be earned, unnecessary use of force, culture that neglects the value of youth voice and rights of children and youth in foster care, disproportionate number of Black children and youth in the most restrictive and toxic settings, and while in community setting inadequate support of youth with food, financial assistance, housing, and transportation.
These challenges result in the lowest graduation rate, lost connections to family as well as healthcare and school professionals, loss of academic credits and transcripts, repeating classes and entire grades, students not being able to graduate from high school and dropping out, negatively impacting your mental, emotional, social, and financially. Youth unable to fit in society due to long, long-term isolation, trauma, institute, excuse me, and, and, and too centralized.
To address these challenges, we based our solutions on our values and expectations of the Every Student Succeeds Act, where all foster children and youth in Michigan, regardless of placement, must have the same access and opportunities as everyone else to prepare for high school graduation, earn post-secondary credentials, and reach their full potential. That would mean, A, uninterrupted public school education for entire school years in an environment where their healthy, health, stability, and safety is guaranteed. B, where all students in foster care are guaranteed all rights and protections in accordance to Every Student Succeeds Act. Our recommendations are as follows. One, rights. Residential placements must enroll students in accredited Michigan merit curriculum, which leads towards high school diploma and uninterrupted public school education, where students can participate in school and after-school activities. Therefore, amend education portion of MDHHS residential placement contract to include Michigan merit curriculum, high school diploma, education development plan, defining education and medical rights holders roles, including that foster youth will immediately enroll in local public schools unless court order states otherwise. Youth must have access, or two, youth must have access to information as to what is happening in their case, including access to accurate and complete educational records, transcripts needed to understand academic progress, credits and assessments coordinated by use of technology. Youth-centered and co-created MDHHS computer system can ensure not only access to information, but also guarantee youth voice, equity, and efficiency. Right for student, three, rights for students to be represented by legal parents for education or their education rights holders or surrogates, as neither DHHS nor its contractual agents can act as an educational surrogate for a court word. Four, foster youth 18 and up together with surrogates or education rights holders must be assisted in developing the state education plans for foster youth with the help of the Michigan Department of Education.
Five, climate and culture matters. Invest in a safe, healthy, excuse me, invest in a safe, health, and stable place and school and, and effective, and effective trauma-informed inventions or interventions, which include de-escalation techniques based on... De- de- escalation, um, techniques based on restrict-
Restored.
Restore practice. Youth and children who run away must have access to, to a safe place and must be able to tell all their reasons of running away without fear, intimidation. Invest in a trauma-informed and a safe, organic pathways used, um, restraining practice. Um, provided legal, provided legal, um,
Representation.
Representation for foster youth facing delinquency charges while under state supervision and present students' IEP five oh, five oh four plan is accepted.
Compreh, eight, comprehensive youth center transition plan must be implemented from day one of placement with focus on education and student well-being. Therefore, students must be enrolled immediately on the next open school day without pre-assessment and without any precondition with official transcript on hand and with clear plans for transportation. If student is in seventh grade or older with an education development plan on hand and IEP five oh four plan as needed. Tran, nine, transition planning should include all stakeholders, including that youth understands and is supported to identify at least two supportive adults in addition to education rights holder or surrogate. For coordinated youth center school and MDHHS transition planning beginning in seventh grade to prepare and update the education developmental plan until twelfth grade and prepare students for post-secondary opportunities. Ten, transitions must have judicial oversight. Require caseworkers to submit an academic progress update as well as an academic credit and records transfer plan at each hearing and before changing placement for a child and youth in foster care.
Eleven, stability is necessary for the well-being of students in foster care. Students in foster care deserve to be connected and rooted in community by remaining the same in elementary, middle, and high school. Non, nonprofit residential child caring in-
Institutions.
Institutions. Foster care payments range from a hundred and thirty dollars to four hundred per month while foster parents and youth stipends remains at twenty-one dollars per day. Foster child's youth have better outcomes when, when they live in homes and with families instead of, of institutions. Increase daily rate of stipends for both foster youth and foster parents to forty dollars per day. National youth is tr, is transition data showed Michigan identified financial access as second top needed at fifty-nine point two percent, fourth top needed at housing at fifty-five point two percent. Streamline transportation for students to remain in the same school and participate in all school-based activities, including after-school programs statewide as students currently move across coun- county line. Michigan youth identified transportation is fourth highest needed at, on the national youth and transportation data at forty-seven point two percent. Raise the age. According to the national youth and transition data, Michigan, over sixty percent of the youth, of the foster youth did not graduate high school with the peers statewide. Raise the, raise the age of eligibility for students in foster care to twenty-three for both tuition and, and, uh, incentive program and education training voucher to ensure access and quality and, um,
Inclusion.
Inclusion for students, of students in foster care to access their opportunities. National youth and transitions data service of Michigan youth age out of, age out of, identified food as the top high is needed at seventy-four percent. Provided, un, un, tapered, un-tapered MDHHS.
Uninterrupted.
I mean, uninterrupted MDHHS SNAP food access benefits for foster youth sixteen to twenty-six and when not, I mean, in and out of high school and post-secondary institutionals, or, yeah.
You're good.
With no mand, mandatory work requirements using allowable fifteen percent exemption. Um, fifteen, provided immediate support of students in foster care who are behind academically and making av- available students transcripts on parchment.
Uh, convene an equity and inclusion forum to increase access to post-secondary preparation programs such as Michigan Gear Up and Trio to address unique needs of students in foster care. And lastly, reinstate MDHHS education planners and coordinate their service with College Access Navigators and Office of Scholarship and Grants. Um, what has been accomplished so far is ongoing collaboration among Michigan Department of Education, Michigan Health and Human Services, and youth with lived expertise of foster care. Um, a eight p, eight percent increase for foster youth depend, independent living stipend as of October first, twenty twenty-two. Education planners to be reinstated and work in colla- collaboration with Office of Scholarship and Grants and local college access navigators to support school foster care liaisons, private agency, and MDHHS workers. Access to school-based foster care liaison list, MDA, MDE should make list of school-based foster care liaisons, public, and quarterly share updated list with MDHHS to share on youth and transition site and to allow foster youth, foster parents, workers, and guardian ad litem to better collaborate with schools.
Brianna, Brianna, uh, shared the, some of the, some of the, um, work that has been done since we've had the opportunity to work with, with their group, um, and Sabah and her team. So, um, as Brianna just mentioned, we have made the, um, list publicly available, um, on the MDU website and shared it with our MDHHS colleagues. You can access it, uh, technology-wise, but sometimes navigating technology is hard, so we are providing the list, um, uh, on a quarterly basis and have shared that with Sabah and, and the youth so they know where to access it. Um, we also anticipate Representative Stone will lead legislative efforts, including introducing, introducing legislation to improve ed- uh, educational opportunities for youth in foster care. Uh, there were draft bills, um, that were shared with the department, uh, that did not make its way, um, into the lame duck session, as a lot of things didn't make their way in the lame duck session. So, uh, we do anticipate the, uh, Representative Stone's leadership, um, introducing those in the next term and working with them to, uh, um, specifically target the needs that Brianna and Chris, and Chris on Randall Online have mentioned here, uh, today. Um, Tim's got a couple other ones that didn't make the bullets, um, in here today, but some other work and that, um, MDHHS has done specifically to the recommendations from the FUTC group.
Specifically, the recommendation regarding educational planners for, uh, youth in foster care, the department secured funding and has already, uh, uh, begun the hiring process for two new educational planners whose focus will be children in congregate care settings. The priority focus for these two positions will be children who are in a congregate care placement who are transitioning to a community placement. So that will be the, uh, the first round, and, um, then again, the focus will be on all children in congregate care placement.
With that, Dr. Rice, thank you for the time, board. Thank you for the time and listening to, uh, our, our young, our young adults who share their experiences in, in very passionate and powerful way, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Very much, uh, presenters, you did a terrific job, particularly the young people. You, um, you told your story as well. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Uh, we appreciate your voices. Um, your voices, more than anything, open up the issue and help us reform a system that should have been reformed long ago. There should be no such thing as non-credit-bearing courses. It's an outrage, and they need to end. Um, board members, any, um, any questions or comments? I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Tilly initially.
Um, first of all, I want to say thank you to the young adults that spoke today, the young adults that called in. Um, thank you for your courage. Thank you. Thank you for using your stories, sharing them, being vulnerable, being open, because those stories are the catalyst for this change. Uh, and it's so, so important, what you're doing. It's not only, uh, so many of your peers, but for future generations, this is gonna affect the work that you're doing right now. Um, it was very well organized, very thoughtful, and really, really appreciate you coming here today to share with us. Uh, Sabah, you have been awfully quiet, which is normal. Sabah is incredibly humble and has an amazing heart and very genuine. I have been working with Sabah for probably over a decade now quietly, behind the scenes, assisting, um, with the youth in different areas. Um, when Sabah says they need something, or when I get resources, I, I'm contacting Sabah, and she has worked so hard, and your diligence is paying off. Your leadership is paying off. People don't know you are really the Harriet for foster youth. So, um, just thank you so much for all of the work that you do. Um, both of you, thank you for the work that you're doing with this. Um, I feel like we, we are gonna make big changes. I definitely want to see it continue. I definitely would like, you know, I don't know, six months or a year from now, another conversation of the changes that have been implemented. Um, data, uh, uh, it would also be helpful for a strategic plan of how do we raise these graduation rates amongst these youth? What, what are we gonna do to get the graduation rates up and support them? Um, Sabah had me join recently, um, the State Treasurer, um, Fostering Future Scholarships Trust Fund Committee. And tha- that's a great opportunity for students to get scholarships, but if we only have thirty percent graduating from high school and then only a few of them actually going to college, how many are we really touching and affecting? So, um, definitely want to work on getting those graduations up, um, improved accountability and tracking. Um, it sounds like a lot of that needs to happen. There's been from listening to the youth today, listening to the youth in the prior sessions with the meetings with Park West Foundation, and com, multiple conversations with Sabah. There are a lot of gaps, and it's a huge job to fill those gaps. So I'm counting on you guys. I, I'm so glad that you're here at the table today and that you, um, are taking the youth's voice, the young adults' voice, voices seriously. And I would also suggest an advise, a formal advisory committee, so with youth. Because a lot of times, we're making policies for people that, you know, in situations that we've never been in. And so we don't know all of the effects. And as things change, you know, as you maybe, um, you know, get a promotion or you're in a different department, whatever, an advisory committee that's consistent for the department made up of foster youth and youth that have aged out of the system where they can advise, um, on areas that, um, the department may not be aware of, fully aware, fully aware of. So, that, that is my advice, and thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other, uh, other reflections from board members? So, one, Ms. Lipton.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Um, just one question that I have is, um, is Park West Foundation, are they unique? Or do you work in conjunction with other youth foster care advocacy organizations to amplify, um, and capture what's happening statewide, um, with the foster youth population? Or are you, yes, the only ones?
So, we do partner with also MDHHS. We've partnered over the years with, uh, MYOI, which is a Michigan Youth Opportunities Initiative. We partner with all contracted private agencies in the tri-county area specifically. We had done some statewide work and collaboration with MDHHS, uh, for some years also. But, uh, we focus in the tri-county area, and we do collaborate, uh, also with organizations outside of the state of Michigan. That has been really helpful. We've had some youth interned in Washington, DC also with some advocacy groups that teach our young people how to better advocate. Um, so, yes, we partner, we try to learn what's happening in other states, but also just listening to them, and they tell us what's happening because our perspective, our paradigm is different, but the more we listen, we become more of an expert. So, yes, um, we are unique, and at the same time, we collaborate with others, so both, yes.
Um, thank you very much, Ms. Lipton. Other reflections, board members? Uh, Dr. Pugh.
I just simply want to, um, thank you all for, for coming here and for sharing your stories, and thank, uh, Board Member Tilly, uh, for bringing this to us. So, um, whatever we can continue to do at this table to support, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Anyone else? Um, that was a very involved, complicated presentation, which is going to lead to change in the way we educate foster care youth. So we appreciate that. You know, you've taken a, um, an extraordinarily complicated issue and brought it home in public, and it's going to lead to change for, for young people. Um, first thing we need to do is to get into the legislature and make certain that there's no such thing as non-credit-bearing courses in, um, in Michigan public education. Not for anybody. Not acceptable. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Rice, I did, I did want to say too, we worked on a resolution to send to the, um, legislators. I worked on the first draft. Sabah helped, the le- Legislative Committee helped, MDE helped. It was a collaboration of all of us working for you guys to help you with the legislators. So, um, I know that some of them are working on it now as well. Thank God. And we all are on board too.
We appreciate.
For systemic change.
Yes. We want to thank everyone, Superintendent Rice, and also Director Sterling, who, Sterling, who's not with us today. He's been very open about listening to young people's voices and being led by their expertise. He's been very, um, welcoming to them, and, uh, we just appreciate this collaboration, which is really historic. Um, and there is definite value to the young people, so I'm glad you mentioned that. But we just want to thank everyone, including the Board of Education, for having us here today. And I think every, everything is moving us closer to the place where we need to be, which is where young people need to be treated like everyone else.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Board, um, we are at, uh, two thirty-six. We're going to approve the board meeting minutes, and then we are going to hear the, um, we are going to consider the resolution on the education of foster care youth. So Sabah, you may want to stay.
Okay.
Uh, for, for a minute. You don't necessarily have to stay at the table, but we would like you to, to be here for the, the debate. Approval of the meeting minutes. May I please have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of regular and committee of the whole meeting of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Don't move.
Moved by Dr. Pritchett, seconded by Ms. Lipton. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. Um, if we could have a roll call vote.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder absent.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We do have a resolution. We put on the agenda, uh, this morning. Um, it is a resolution on the education of foster care youth. Ms. Tilly, would you like to move that?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much. And would someone like to second that? I appreciate that, Dr. Pugh. So we have a motion, we have a second. Um, do we have any discussion on the resolution, which was read into the record, um, this morning? It has been extensively discussed over the last hour in this presentation. Is there any additional discussion of that resolution before a vote is taken on the resolution? Hearing and seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please, on the resolution.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder absent. Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board, for your leadership. Thank you, Board, for your leadership. Thank you very much to our presenters for their leadership as well. And for those of you who joined us today in support of this important effort. Thank you. Report to the President. Madam President.
Well, that's a very hard presentation to follow. But I just want to make a couple comments. As you know, it's hard to believe, but this is, after 16 years, my last meeting, serving on this board and serving the state in this role. And I just want to say it's been a profound honor, not only because of the very important work that we do, but because of the amazing people and professionals who I've met along the way and who represent truly the best that the state has to offer, including everyone who works in this department, who is the utmost professional in what they do every single day. I've been blessed to work with four state superintendents, each unique in their own way. But every one of them, I truly believe, had the children of the state at heart in the work that they did. Dr. Rice, I will not necessarily miss the 9:00 PM phone calls. But I will always be grateful for your counsel and your commitment to education and the open communication. You not only called me at 9:00 PM, but I often called you. So, and we both picked up the phone most of the time. Marilyn, I just want to say you've been the one constant throughout my entire time on the board. You 100% represent the term servant leader, always making sure that everyone has what they need at the beginning of every board meeting and anticipating what we need before we even know that we need it. I love how proud you are of your ginormous family, and I'm sure that they are very excited to get to spend more time with you and have Grandma come watch more sports stuff. And of course, there are the great board members that I've been honored to work with, both those that are here today and those that are no longer serving. Too many to name individually, but everyone's certainly worthy of it. So as a policy-setting board, it can be very easy, I think, to get lost in the minutia of our work. But I've always tried to keep the big picture in mind when I've been serving on this board. And my experience in public education should be what I think we strive for every child to have, which is a safe place with a sense of belonging and schools that are truly the heart of the community in which they serve. And so I want to talk for a moment about the purpose of public education because sometimes that gets a little lost in the conversation. Every state constitution in the nation outlines the need for education that's open for everybody. And there's a reason for that. It's because the purpose of public education is not simply to train workers. It's to perpetuate and protect democracy, which is why I believe we need to recommit ourselves to the study of things like the liberal arts. Or in its Greek origins, artes liberales, which historically, the liberal arts were known as the essential education needed for free people to effectively participate in public life. The ancient Greeks knew that in order for people to be free, they needed to be educated in the trivium of grammar, logic, and rhetoric, and the quadrivium of geometry, arithmetic, astronomy, music, while emphasizing civic duty and the development of the whole person so that they could reach their full potential. I think this, coupled with the social sciences, enhances education in all fields by encouraging critical and creative thinking skills. And of course, these are the subjects that are hard to assess. But they are absolutely critical. We talked earlier about the narrowing of the curriculum and how that particularly affects children in lower socioeconomic status households. And we just heard from students who are the most vulnerable, who are probably the least likely to get this type of education, even though they vitally need it, in order to advocate on their own behalf. We, as board members, sit on the front lines of ensuring the atmosphere that provides for future generations to reach their full potential as they work towards creating a more perfect union. The work we do and the work that every single educator does is vital for our future in our nation, and I am tremendously grateful that I've been a part of it. As I reflect on my years on this board, I must say that the last few years have been particularly challenging. There is a general meanness that has washed over our political discourse and permeates our public life. But as leaders, it's our job to rise above this discourse and set an example. And here's the thing, there's no talent in being mean. It doesn't take any particular skill to tear someone down or to tear something down. Building someone up, that takes talent. Demonstrating kindness or compassion, that is a skill. And I think this is why I am so passionate about public education, and I will fiercely defend public school educators. Because this is the one field, these are the professionals who build up little people into big peoples. And it takes a great amount of talent to do that. I think there are a lot of talented, skillful people on this board, in this room, and in our public schools. And my hope is that you all continue to be thoughtful leaders who practice your talent and skill in every decision you make as if the future of our republic depends on it, because I sincerely believe that it does. And the final thing I just want to say is, thank you for your support and your friendship over the years. I have made, some of the relationships with the folks here today are the strongest relationships I've had, and I can't thank you enough for that. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to work alongside all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that, too, is hard to follow. And I'm not going to reprise my remarks from this morning except to say that we honor and appreciate our Board President, who's leaving us with this meeting today. Although, I will say that you've got another 18 days left of your term.
But who's counting?
Note that there are more 9:00 PM calls in your future. Note also that there are people that receive calls later than 9:00 PM. So there is that. You know, you've really graced the Board and our work with your presence, and we appreciate you enormously. We appreciate, similarly, Marilyn, who's who's leaving the department after 44 years and an enormous career in support of state boards for many years. And prior to that, department staff. So we appreciate you. And we're going to celebrate you, I think, on a Marilyn Merch-Snyder farewell tour in the next several days. So we're looking forward to saying all sorts of good things about you, some of which are easier to say off-camera than
That's the good stuff.
than on. And then to Jason Strayhorn, the voice of the green and white. We appreciate him enormously. He added insight and common sense and an important parent's voice, a voice of faith, to our deliberations at a very, very difficult time, and we appreciate him. And then just one more shout-out, if I could. I had the opportunity to visit Owen Bondano, our Michigan Teacher of the Year at his school, Oak Park High School, a couple weeks ago with Ms. Alessandra Shrewsbury, my special assistant. And Owen Bondano is just one extraordinary teacher. And it was such a wonderful thing to not only be in his classroom, but to be with his student group after school and to see the work that they are doing in rethinking their school environment. It was quite a wonderful school visit on a Friday afternoon. We were very fortunate to have had that opportunity. And I'll be sharing more about it at the next state board meeting. But was just really charmed by his work with young people. Board members, it is 2:48. And what I would like to do with your forbearance is consider the remaining resolution that was placed on the board agenda. It is the Resolution on Charter School Financial Transparency. Could I have a motion to move that resolution? Moved by President Albridge. Could I have a second? Support from Dr. Pugh. We read it into the record this morning. But now, any discussion? President Albridge.
Thank you very much. I would encourage support for the resolution. I think Michigan has done little to update its charter school laws since early 2010, 2011. And even then, it was minimal at best. The need for financial transparency has been clear for years. Our laws are tremendously weak in comparison to other states when it comes to charter schools. This board heard from a nationally-known researcher on issues he has with getting information from Michigan's charters. And as a board, we engaged in a process of trying to get information from charters as well. And that process demonstrated that much of the information that is publicly available from traditional schools is not publicly available from many of our charters. What information is available is difficult to break down in any meaningful way. And as we learned from our FOIA attempt, cannot be easily compared to the same information from traditional schools. For these reasons, I think it's time for taxpayers to know how their dollars are being spent. And I would encourage a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge. Dr. Pugh? No, very good. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, I just want to also encourage support of this resolution. This is really, really timely in the sense that we've got a new legislative session beginning. This is an issue that has been worked on by the legislature for even going back to when I was in the legislature, maybe even earlier. And I think that to send this over now with the research and the work that the state board has done will be really, really important in setting a priority for the new legislature and the new legislators that will be starting in the next year.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Any other board members care to share? Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I'd like the maker of the motion or anybody to just let me know. I mean, as far as I know, the requirement to have a private entity be subject to FOIA, I'm not aware that anybody else that's a private entity in Michigan is subject to FOIA. Can anybody tell me of those?
Please.
I am not aware of that. However, I'm also not aware of any other private entity that assumes an entire control over a state's budget and then spends it as they please. So I think this is a unique situation.
Okay. Well, I don't think there is a private entity. I think that this is clearly an effort. You know, there's some things in this resolution I could support, but the idea that a private entity should be subject to FOIA is the only reason this would be done is to reduce those who want to start charter schools. There is no other effort, and it's pretty similar. It follows a pattern like the opposition to the Opportunity Scholarships petition drive for poor students to give them choices. It seems that there are many that are more interested in the adults in the system instead of the kids. They will sacrifice kids and force them to be locked up in failing schools and not give the parents options to get them into schools that they would prefer, all in the name of special interests in the adults in the system. So, you know, just as a, you know, in 2020, I have some enrollment statistics that in charter schools, you know, 75, about 60% more economically disadvantaged students are in charter schools, twice, almost twice as many English-language learners. Over three times more African-Americans are in charter schools. You know, in the U.S. News and World Report, the best high schools in America rankings, top nine open enrollment high schools in Detroit are all charter schools. On the MSEP test, charter schools in Detroit outperformed traditional schools in 15 of 18 subsequent areas. When it comes to graduation rate, the top 10 high schools in Detroit are all charter schools. I could go on and on, but I think it's clear that this provision in here is simply another effort to stop African-American students from getting good education because there is a more focus on the adults in the system. So it is unfortunate that it is a consistency. Again, with the Opportunity Scholarships, God forbid, we give, you know, poor students and students in urban areas and failing schools the opportunity to go to a private school. Some people, again, it would stir up the system. It would make it difficult for those adults who benefit from the system currently and the status quo. But certainly, this idea that there's any interest in equity, you know, there is no interest in equity. Only when it serves the power base and increasing more power. There's no, the things that actually encourage equity are opposed when it's not convenient for the power structures and increasing power on the left. So I just will be opposing this and find it as a continuation of, you know, and sure, some people are going to say, oh, no, we just want transparency. Well, you know, you don't want transparency in teacher unions. You don't want transparency in MASA and FOIA and those organizations. No, it's only going to be one. And it's clearly served, being done in order to reduce and harm or reduce charter schools, which ultimately harms kids from getting at least a choice and a chance, many of the students, to get a decent education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. President Albridge?
Just to reiterate, if we're going to talk about adults in the system, many of these, the charter schools in Michigan spend well over $1 billion every single year. And much of this is funneled into for-profit companies, which means that there are adults in those companies who are making a lot of money by, of the education of children and treating kids as commodities. So if we are protecting adults in the system, I would say we're currently protecting those who own and operate these charter management organizations that are not subject to public transparency on how they are spending dollars. I think if anything, we are the ones that are looking out for the kids in the system by ensuring that taxpayer dollars are being used effectively and efficiently in educating children and not lining the pockets of adults.
Chairman? Yes, you bet. Please.
Yeah, I mean, I find it incredible that giving people a choice, allowing kids to, nobody is forcing any child to go to a charter school. Nobody is forcing a parent to send their child to a charter school. It is only because, and they're grossly underfunded compared to traditional schools. No interest in equity. But because there are some people out there that are willing to put some of their own money into and risk and spend the time to give others an opportunity, a chance, they are vilified. And, you know, I have met a few Democrats in the legislature, typically those who have benefited from the charter school system, who will not attack it. And even though you can't unionize or you don't have to necessarily unionize in the charter schools, they realize that children benefit from this. And, you know, it's just a shame that the idea that, you know, some adults will go out and try to provide an alternative option is vilified. And it's, it is what it is. It's done because the power structures don't like choice. They don't like competition. And it's sad, very sad.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Dr. Pugh, to you.
I think we have to be really careful how we throw words around here at this table. The word "choice." In many of these communities, it is not a choice when schools are shuttered because you have resources being sucked away from the traditional public schools, where I've seen children be okay with where they are, parents wanting their children to stay there, but the resources are sucked for the profit of for-profit. there, but the resources are sucked for the profit of for-profit charters. So that's not a choice. And then the word "equity," that's a word that has been something that you've not wanted to hear at this table. So for us to bring that up now, at this point, when we're talking about righting some wrongs, I'm offended by that.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other board members? Any other reflections from board members? To be clear, to be, I beg your pardon, Ms. Tilly. Thank you so much, Mr. Barron, our de facto ninth state board member.
You know, with charter schools not having transparency, there's a potential for misuse of funds, and we've heard of cases where there have been misuse of funds. We are not trying to deprive anybody of anything, but let's be clear, these are public funds, and they should be accountable like any other public entity, especially the other public schools. There are 45 states, so not, not every state allows charter schools, but there are also many states that regulate how many charter schools can even be put into a state, how many charter schools you can have. Michigan has not regulated charter schools, and we need to, just like we have to regulate traditional public schools. So I think this is important. We've had these conversations at this table before. I'm glad we're bringing this back. I'm glad President Albrecht is pushing this, and as well as the Legislative Committee. And so I think we need to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other state board members?
Chairman.
Please.
Since I was one of the key figures in lifting the cap, I think it's great that we, when I was in the legislature, I think it's great that we do have, we can give as much opportunity to kids in failing schools to get them out of the failing schools. It only sucks resources away if the school is not doing very well and the parents choose to send them to a different school, which is just such, some people think is such a horrible thing to actually give parents a choice and give a child an opportunity to get out of a failing school and into a better school. And so I certainly see that there is no other private entity that we want to try to do this to. They are being singled, charter management organizations are being singled out, and there are plenty of other entities that get huge amounts of money from the state that are not being looked at as being, should be FOI- affordable and being open in the Freedom of Information Act. So this singling out of one type of entity is to crush and to try and stop these choices and parents in failing schools from having opportunities and choices. So I certainly will be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Please.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that the idea that charter schools outperform traditional public schools is a misnomer at best. We, for years, this board did a charter report that we sent to the legislature, and then the legislature did not like what was in the charter report and asked us not to send it anymore. And the last one that we did demonstrated that 50% of charter schools were in the bottom 25% of performing schools in the entire state of Michigan. So to suggest that, that people are choosing to leave traditional schools, which by the way, 90% of parents who choose a public school in Michigan choose a traditional, locally governed, public school, their choice matters too. That's choice. So let's put back on the table what we're actually talking about here, which is financial transparency, which most states that have charter schools require financial transparency. We are the outlier here. We are not, this is not about taking choice away from parents. We are the, we are, have a problem in this state, and this board has an obligation to correct that problem. That's all we're talking about here. So I would like to move forward and call a question if need be, or we can just go ahead and vote.
I would like to reply.
Please.
Just one last thing. There is financial transparency. We've heard that. It's a, you know, it's a misnomer to suggest that there isn't financial transparency. FOIA is about way more than financial transparency. If it was just financial transparency, let's talk about that. The vast majority, they're required to do all kinds of reporting, and we could talk about any additional reporting. FOIA is by no means, it's a very small part of it, would be any kind of financial transparency. So that's why it's clearly inappropriate. And again, an assault to try to reduce parents' choice simply because they don't, they don't have to be unionized, they can have some flexibility that other schools can't. And again, it's just, it's unbelievable that the kids who are benefited from charter schools, and yes, I can keep reading statistics, it's clear that they're much better than the traditional schools in many areas, or the parents wouldn't choose them unless you think that they're dumb and they get tricked into it, which is a ridiculous statement. I don't think the parents are dumb. Only, only others are saying that. So no, they're choosing because they believe clearly that it's a better school, and the statistics back it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Tilly, to you.
So I think that the state has a great example of charter schools not always working. Thinking back to the EAA that was created in Detroit in 2011, had 15 schools, competed with the district. Some of the students from the reports that I got at the time were in the auditorium. They weren't learning, they didn't have enough staff. There were multiple issues. It almost destroyed the Detroit Public School District. Multiple schools were closed down, torn down. It just created chaos, and it was finally dissolved in 2017. So we have a huge example, but those schools were not regulated as well as the other ones, and we need regulation. We need to know what's going on inside of those schools, and we need to do it for the safety of our students. It's about the students. We need to know what's going on with them, and we need to make sure that they are getting everything that they should be getting. So I'm voting yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other board member? Or the listening public? Because sometimes these debates can get a little bit arcane. This is not a vote on whether public school academies should exist in the state of Michigan. This is not a vote about whether public school academies are stronger or not as strong as traditional public school districts. This is not about the quality of PSAs. It's not about their existence or their ability to exist in the state of Michigan. These are, for the moment, very well established. This is about whether public school academies have the same financial transparency as traditional public school districts. And the FOIA of this body to almost 300 school districts, traditional public school districts, and public school academies in the five ISDs with the largest number of public school academies in the state, our FOIA request showed that there's not the same financial transparency. It is a matter of public record. We spent the better part of a year on this work. We did the research. We proved there is not the same financial transparency. Those dollars, when they go to traditional public school districts and PSAs, those dollars are public dollars. They're taxpayer dollars. We have the right to know what happens to taxpayer dollars. They're our dollars. And in some cases, respect to certain PSAs, we lose oversight over them. They're gone. Public dollars become private dollars, and we lose oversight over them. That's wrong. It's not acceptable. It's not about quality. It's not about choice. It's not about parental involvement. It's about what happens to a public dollar, a taxpayer dollar.
Like the $10,000 bill you guys charge to chalk beat for FOIA?
Speaking of irrelevance.
Information? You have a right to know taxpayer money is true. You just don't, you don't follow it.
So the fact of the matter is that this is a vote on whether there should be financial transparency around public dollars.
No, it's way more than that. It's FOIA. I mean, he's not, he's not saying it correctly.
Okay. So we have a, we have a, we have a, we have a motion to call the question. We have a support. Any discussion on the motion to call the question? Hearing none. This is a vote on the calling of the question.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder absent. Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Question is called. This is a motion. This is a vote on the motion itself. Roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder absent. Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Board, we are going to bounce at 3:10 to our 11:30 a.m. item. Presentation on Advanced Placement Potential. This presentation provides an overview of advanced placement potential and the partnership among the Michigan Department of Education, the College Board, and the Center for Educational Performance and Information, otherwise known as SEPI. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. We welcome our presenter, who's been patiently waiting for the last 3 hours and 40 minutes for the opportunity to present, Dr. Delsa Chapman, our Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Educator, Student, and School Supports. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Dr. Chapman, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, board. Today I will be sharing the Advanced Placement or AP Potential Tool Initiative and how excited we are about the accomplishments thereof. Today's presentation on the AP Potential Tool highlights its alignment to Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, along with the beneficial features of the tool itself. Additionally, the overall components of the initiative, from the data collection process to the distribution of the state-issued communication, will also be shared today. We will start our presentation with emphasis on Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Central to the work of the Michigan Department of Education and within the Division of Education, Student, and School Supports is alignment of our work to the state's strategic education plan. As such, this slide highlights alignment of the Advanced Placement Potential Tool Initiative to said plan focusing on Goals 4, 5, and 6, which specifically are as follows. Goal 4: to expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. Goal 5: to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. And Goal 6: to increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. And now for the tool's features. The Advanced Placement, or abbreviated as AP Potential Tool, is a free online tool that allows schools, or in this case, the state of Michigan, in partnership with the College Board, to generate rosters of students who are likely to score a 3 or higher on an AP exam based on their performance on the SAT suite of assessments. It should be expressly understood that the use of the tool is not intended to only encourage enrollment in AP, but to expressly encourage students to realize their potential to be successful in rigorous coursework and college-level learning experiences while yet attending high school. While the state has used the AP Potential Tool to identify such students, this is a tool readily available for districts to use to support students as well. The process of the initiative begins with data collection. Based on spring 2022 PSAT 89 and PSAT 10 data, the Michigan Department of Education received in late summer, the Center for Education Performance and Information, or SEPI, the Office of Educational Assessment and Accountability, or OEAA, in partnership with the College Board, worked to identify students in grades 9 or higher who exhibit the potential to score a 3 or higher on a given AP exam and be successful in AP coursework. This means that students will receive or have received notification as early as their sophomore year, expanding the opportunity to participate in AP courses and related rigorous coursework. This was a definite heavy lift, and as such, I would like to take this opportunity to say that the efforts also occurred within the Office of Educational Supports here at the Michigan Department of Education. As such, gratitude is shown to Director Dr. Corinne Edwards, Manager Ruthann Hodges, Consultant Jeffrey MacNeil, and Support Staff Members Stacy Snyder and Krista Worthington for their outstanding work in the process of gathering not only the data or helping to gather data and compile it in a means of the following. The Michigan Department of Education, based on those staff members' efforts, issued over 40,000 letters of congratulations from our astounded State Superintendent of Public Education, Dr. Michael Rice, to parents and guardians of those students. This is a huge and potentially, potentially life-changing moment for students in our state. Prior to issuing the letter, we had to also focus on communication. Communicating with our partners in the field was a critical component. As such, we communicated the initiative in multiple formats as listed here on the screen. It was included as a talking point in Dr. Rice's updates at the Michigan Association of School Administrators Fall Conference in mid-September. A memorandum was issued to local and intermediate school district superintendents and public school academy directors in late September. Michigan Department of Education hosted two informational webinars available to the field during October, October, with partners from the College Board and Michigan Virtual to help all of us to better understand this opportunity and what we needed to readily have in place as we issued the letter to our parents. And finally, MDE issued a reminder memo in November just prior to the issuance of the The intended outcomes: notifying parents and guardians prior to or during the sophomore year of students' education helps to expand the number and percentage of students in rigorous coursework in high school, particularly those from historically underrepresented groups, including economically disadvantaged students. This opportunity also supports students in earning college credit. After students take AP courses, many universities will award students college credit and/or allow them to waive introductory courses based on end-of-year exams or assessments. This can change a student's sense of capability and life direction and reduce the cost of college while they work towards a post-secondary degree. It also can distinguish them as ideal candidates when they apply to post-secondary institutions. It offers college-level experiences while in high school and multiple means of opportunities to learn exciting subjects in greater depth. We will now review evidence-based support and data-driven rationale specific to this The findings of the work of T. Lee Morgan and others in their 2018 From High School Access to Post-Secondary Success: An Exploratory Study of the Impact of High-Rigor Coursework profoundly substantiates the intended outcomes of the Michigan Department of Education AP Potential Tool Initiative. As you see here, participation in rigorous coursework motivates, it engages our students, and with that, they are able to, while participating in such coursework, learn how to study, how to manage. learn how to study, how to manage their time to be more successful, to balance stress, and overall, as a student, promote self-care. Additionally, high schools that offer an array of rigorous coursework opportunities, not only AP, but also including IB, and according to the study, concurrent enrollment, which we here in Michigan define as DE or dual enrollment, and early college programs, graduate more students who are prepared for the college experience and then ultimately earn a degree. In terms of a data-driven rationale, the three points presented regarding enrollment decline is specifically for economically disadvantaged students. And we also note here the overall number of AP tests taken, which contribute to this rationale as well. We're looking to increase that. The next several slides share and highlight this data. Here you can see an increase of 11% in AP participation from 2015-16 through 2017-18, with a decline of 7% thereafter. AP courses compete in some communities with CTE, dual enrollment, early-middle college, and IB. Here you see the information presented in a different format, with a net increase of approximately 3,000 students taking AP courses in the last five years. So we are seeing an increase over time. Here you see the changes in the last half decade by ethnicity. And here you can see the changes in the last half decade by socioeconomic status. There has definitely been an increase in economically disadvantaged students taking AP courses and a decrease in non-economically disadvantaged students during the same period. As previously mentioned, AP courses compete with other rigorous coursework, including CTE, dual enrollment, early-middle college, and IB. In our last data set here, you can see a decline in the number of AP tests taken, meaning we have students that are enrolling, but we want them to also to take the AP test because it is the completion of those tests that then affords them the opportunity to be considered for waived courses upon college entry as well as scholarships. Notice that there was an increase in AP tests taken in the state until the first full year of the pandemic. So how does this look in practice? Challenging coursework comes in a variety of forms. Although this presentation is focused on the AP Potential Tool, MDE recognizes that not all schools and districts offer AP courses or even a range of AP programs. Another option, if schools do not offer AP courses, is to explore AP options available through Michigan Virtual. Dual enrollment courses also allow students to work toward a high school diploma and a college degree, saving time and money. We share on this slide a sample of the letter issued on Michigan Department of Education letterhead. Earlier, I stated more than 40,000, and here I emphasize the exact number. 41,879 parents received the letter. It is important to note that Michigan is the fourth state education agency to issue this type of notification. We were chronologically preceded by Connecticut, Arkansas, and Rhode Island. Our emphasis in sharing the sample letter is to highlight that we have communicated a range of options to parents and guardians to explore with their child. This letter is not only limited to promoting or emphasizing advanced placement. Students, parents, and guardians are encouraged to explore opportunities available within their district with their school counselors, instructors, and administrators. In closing today, we reiterate the evidence-based rationale shared earlier in the presentation. Young people aspire to expanded opportunities and greater rigor when they are motivated through engagement. The use of the AP Potential Tool test score does not limit the identification of students to only pursuing and striving for success in AP courses. Rather, our intent is to inform students that they have the potential to be successful in an array of opportunities offered through and by their local districts. In doing so, we continue the efforts of Goal Five, expand the percentage of, I'm sorry, increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. And we also therefore address the intent of Goal Six, where we increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. I take this opportunity to say thank you to the board for having us today, and thank you, Dr. Rice, for your vision and your leadership where we accomplished this heavy lift this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. We appreciate you, and we appreciate your leadership as, as well. This is not simply about expanding advanced placement participation and success. It's about expanding rigor
Yes.
in the state of Michigan, as you well point out, that this is about all of those rigorous opportunities under Goal Four of the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. And you outline several of those. You outline not simply the AP and the IB, the early-middle college, the dual enrollment, the CTE. It's also very important to mention Special Education Transition Services as well, which are critical for tens of thousands of our young people on a regular basis. So thank you so much for, for the presentation. Board members, any questions or comments on this presentation? Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Lipton, and President Albridge, in that order.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just one question, one comment,
Okay.
which will be redundant to what's already been said, but, you know. Could an, this tool that's offered, which is on a website somewhere, could an individual student or family utilize it so it's open to the public? It doesn't?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I just wondered in case somebody from another state or something would ask me that. And the other thing is, I do appreciate the fact that you didn't just focus in on the AP in the letter and in offering students, because, you know, high school kids, they get themselves pigeonholed. Well, Suzie got a letter, I didn't, therefore, I can't do that. And we never want to put any student in that situation. So I appreciate that. The emphasis was on, okay, here's one score, but there's a myriad of choices at the high school level. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Lipton, to you.
But I just want to make sure I understand. This went to students that scored at or above a certain score on the PSAT?
Correct. If a student scored a three or higher on, they had a certain score, I'm sorry, on the PSAT, that's identifying them as having the potential to score a three or higher on an advanced placement exam.
Does that score something that the department determined? Or is that something that the College Board determines?
College Board.
They determine that?
Mm-hmm. It's embedded in the tool.
I see.
It's a series of correlations between, on the one hand, PSAT results, and on the other hand, expected AP results.
Okay.
So you take, I'm sorry, that was not a great answer. Let me do a better job. It is a, it is a series of correlations between PSAT results and subsequent AP results, the history thereof, and what that history means for the likelihood of other young people with the same PSAT scores relative to the same AP exams in the future.
Okay. Do you know if the College Board corrects for socioeconomic status of students by chance?
No, because, because the answer is, these are simply correlations. There is no correction that, that would take place. It is the correlation, the mathematical correlation, between the likelihood of success with a given PSAT result and subsequent AP.
Oh, I, I understand that, yeah. I mean, I'm, okay, thank you. Thanks. So on the, the, and does this letter go, so here you have the data collection is based on a spring, PSAT for grades eight and nine, and also PSAT for 10. So does this mean that the cohort of students that take the eight and nine PSAT would get this in addition to the cohort? In other words, the cohort, the student might get it after they took it in grade eight or nine?
Correct.
And I, and I also know that some students, although it often breaks down to socioeconomic status of the family, will take PSAT eight, nine, as well as 10 as well. The, the PSAT eight, nine, and PSAT 10, are those state requirements that they take those?
Correct. So it, the testing and the score would not be limited to a student who would, by other means, say they self-select to take the test. So no, these, these scores are scores that all of our students have the opportunity to be a part of because it's a part of our state assessment suite of assessments, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Albridge?
So I, what I really appreciate here, I remember having a conversation before about the diversity levels of the folks, students that were taking advantage of advanced placement, early college, et cetera. And I think you alluded to that again here today. And my impression is that this is one method that you are using to try to boost all numbers, but also make it more equitable across divisions.
Exactly.
So, quick question for you. Do you have a quantifiable goal or a measure of success to know whether or not this has made that impact? Or are you just seeing what the impact is first and then kind of determining, you know, what next steps might be?
That's a great question. So we are looking at next steps. We will be gathering data to, to look for what is the response. And so we would hope to be able to come back, although you won't be here. We would look to come back to provide an update in terms of what that quantifiable measure is based on the response.
Thank you.
And ROI, our return on the investment.
So numbers in several of these categories during the pandemic deteriorated. We're trying to boost them all. We are cognizant of the fact that AP competes with these other areas. So to hold everything constant and to think about the impact of AP potential on AP is one thing. To have all of these other elements moving at the same time makes a specific target hard to define. We want to improve the numbers. In aggregate, we'd like to see all of these areas ascend. CTE is particularly important. We can do better in this regard. More than 100,000 children take a CTE a year. And there's a rigor to much of CTE. And there's a, there's really a life trajectory changing element to CTE as well. So some of our local school superintendents have expressed concern that we're favoring one form of rigor over another. In fact, we simply have a tool for one form of rigor, the AP Potential Tool, whereas we don't have a similar tool to identify other people for success, say, in early-middle college, dual enrollment, CTE, IB. So it really is a tool that's associated with AP potential, but which identifies the opportunity for rigor in several areas. Tracking with me or not?
Yeah, no, I, I completely understand that. I'm just, my question was, I mean, we identified a very significant gap, right? And whether you improve that gap via AP or dual enrollment or what? It's the gap that I was focused on, not necessarily the platform.
Fair enough. And so, and so to that point, the gap, both ethnically and socioeconomically, is quite extraordinary and reprehensible. Some of it is about the advisement, as you well know, that particular young people get relative to others. And that advisement is not even that so often, children from particular backgrounds get advised to go into more rigorous coursework than do children from other backgrounds. You know this well from both personal and professional experiences. And what AP Potential does is permits some measure of end round around that unequal advisement.
We're on the same page.
I know we are.
Absolutely.
I know we are. But I'm talking, I'm talking, we are talking to one another and, and out to a broader audience.
To a broad.
Yeah, there's no doubt.
Got it.
There's no question. Yeah. Dr. Pew?
I'll just say again, you know, I really appreciate the approach that has been used in that, you know, you are putting all of these opportunities together. And I did send the message to you from a parent.
And I love that. Thank you.
From a parent who immediately, I mean, it was maybe like right after we left the last board meeting, who was very appreciative of the letter that was going out to students. Their, their child was participating in AP, but they were really appreciative that this was going to be something that was brought to the attention of other parents who may not have, have had that, known that opportunity existed.
So someone asked me, Dr. Pew, why we didn't just let local school superintendents send the letters out. And my response to that was, if I thought all the local superintendents would send them out, I'd be happy to do that because then they could field all the calls and they, they work with their families and their young people and their communities. That's the ideal. But if, on the other hand, you don't believe that particular children, notwithstanding the evidence to the contrary, are capable of success in advanced placement, you're not going to use the AP Potential Tool. And, and so I'm just glad that the parent that, whose communication you sent me got a letter, along with tens of thousands of other parents across the state. Thank you for sharing that. Other, other reflections, board members? Going once, twice? Dr. Delsa Chapman, we appreciate you at 3:37 p.m. on Tuesday, December 13. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board members, we are in the home stretch. But no state board meeting would be complete without hearing from Ms. Nanette Hansen, the 2022-2023 Michigan Teacher of the Year, joining us virtually to present her report. Ms. Hansen is a first-grade teacher at Lemmer Elementary School in Escanaba area public schools. Also, we welcome Ms. Karen Slino, who has been extraordinarily patient through an unusually interesting board meeting today. Our Region Five Teacher of the Year, who teaches math at Flushing Senior High School in Flushing Community Schools, right outside of Flint. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, board members. It's always great to be here and talk with you about what's important to teachers and students and education in Michigan. Today, I'd like to introduce you to my colleague, Karen Slino, Region Five Teacher of the Year from Flushing High School. I'm going to turn it over to her to let her begin our presentation on the importance of math and math equity. Go ahead, Karen.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Nanette. Thank you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. It's really an honor and a pleasure to be here. I have to say, if my 22-year-old new teacher self could see that I would be sitting at the Michigan State Board of Education meeting someday, I wouldn't have believed it. So I am a math teacher, so I'm very, very grateful for Dr. Chapman's presentation on AP because that is a subject near and dear to my heart. But here today, I'm about to talk to you about equity. So it really is a perfect segue into what I would like to talk about. Math equality is not really math equity. And so we'll be talking a bit about AP, but also another area that I'm very passionate about. So to introduce myself, I am Karen Slino. I have been teaching high school math for 31 years. I also happen to be an English major, so I've taught that here and there. But math is really where I've kind of landed. And I've been 29 of those years in Flushing. And as I said, I'm a very passionate AP calculus teacher. I've been doing AP classes for the last 25 years. And my passion for those kids has also funneled outside of Flushing. So I have attended the AP reading since 2006, where we grade all of those exams that are taken throughout the year. In 2016, I became an AP consultant. So in the summer, I work with AP teachers and help them to become better AP calculus teachers. And one of the things we talk about is equity and access and diversity and inclusion. How do we make our classroom of AP students look like our hallways? And many times, they don't look the same. So how do we make that happen? At the reading, I have now become an exam leader, so I'm able to oversee the process a little bit more than I did in 2006. And I've also this year become an AP mentor. So I could have very easily made this presentation about my world in AP because I'm very passionate about that. But that's not what I'm here to talk to you about today. Because I also teach consumer math. So my group of students in consumer math do not look like my students in AP. They often come to me kind of salty about math, a little bitter about their experience, and they just are taking that senior class because they need to. So more on that in a moment. So I would like to share with you some of my favorite places. This is Flushing High School, where I've spent 29 years, not only in the building, in the same classroom. So you can imagine the piles of things that are amassed there. But that is my home, and that is where the kids know I am there for them, whether it's before school, whether it's lunch, after school. If it's seven at night and we want to have a study group, that's where you will find me. When I'm not there, I am traveling the world. At this point, I've been to 45 states and over 30 countries. And many times, it's all about gaining that education to bring back to my students to say, you know, this is how things are done in other places. AP, of course, is, as I said, a big passion of mine. And so this is Kansas City, and this is where I go every year. And I have to say, Michigan is an amazing place to be a teacher. After talking with teachers around the country and world, I'm so happy this is where I fly home every single year. So I'm very grateful for that. But now, most importantly, I want to introduce you to some of my favorite people. So this is my classroom. You'll see there are math curtains hanging in the window because I am a total math nerd. I completely own it. And these are some of my students who are up and about doing activities. Learning is not a quiet activity in my classroom at all. I want kids moving, I want them talking, I want them communicating math. I think that's a really important thing to do. These are some of my consumer math students. And whereas in some classes, you might expect them to be kind of slouched back in their chair, these kids are in it. You know what they're doing right there? They're learning how to calculate the federal tax that's taken out of your paycheck. And they are excited about it. And you can tell, they are all in it, these kids who really didn't like math when they came in my room. This photo shows you some of my pre-calculus students, which all about trying to bring math into the real world. They are outside this fall, collecting UV data using our TI Inspire calculators and a UV probe. They are trying to figure out, is there a difference between an SPF 30 and a 60? And exactly what is that difference? So they're collecting real-life data, they will analyze it and decide, can you ever block all of the UV radiation? And the answer is no, of course. This is another activity I've done with my students at the beginning of the year, to get them talking about numbers and what do they look like? And what patterns do you see? I'm a huge proponent of brain growth. I believe everyone can learn math and learn it well, and they just need to think about the patterns. And what do you notice? And what do you wonder? And those questions come up in my classroom a lot. And finally, it wouldn't be complete if I didn't include my AP calculus classroom last year. There they are. We all design shirts every year that just kind of bind us all together. And all those shirts are hanging on the back of my classroom wall, which you can see behind the kids. So that is my place to be. Those are my favorite people, and they deserve my 100% every single day. So to that end, these are some of the things that I do to bring up my own game. What you see on the left is my bulletin board, one of my bulletin boards this year, that says, "Why math? It's a sign of brain growth." We talk about that all the time. How is your brain growing today? When you make a mistake, did you know your brain grows more than if you get the problem right? That's what we talk about all the time. And on the right, you see some of the books that I read this summer to think about, how can I make learning relevant for everyone? Whether they're in consumer math, or whether they're in AP calculus, or anything in between. So how do I get that message out there? Well, with my students, they hear it every single day. But with teachers out there in the broader world, I put it in a blog. So as of this year, I've become part of the calc medic team. This is a group of people in Grand Rapids, Michigan, who've decided students learn better when they can experience first and then formalize later. So I've gotten on board with them this year as a lesson writer and also as a guest blogger. That was my first blog this year, on the rights of the learner. So when a student walks into your room, they need to know, it's okay to be wrong. It's okay to change your mind. It's okay to be confused. And it's okay to say, you know what? I don't want to answer right now because I'm not sure yet. So that's who I am as a teacher. So why am I here today? Well, first, I'm here to thank you. This program is amazing, and I can't believe how my life has changed since last March. Coming out of the pandemic, that was a tricky time. That's putting it lightly. And I know a lot of my colleagues and I were ready to say, how much longer do we want to do this? But finding out about this program, being named the Regional Teacher of the Year for Region Five, has changed a lot of things for me. And it's given me a voice to really put education in the forefront. So you'll see there a picture of me by our school sign, our local insurance company sign, and our superintendent even included some pictures of the July meeting with you in our opening celebration of the school year. And I also need to thank you, getting to it here, for your part in making financial literacy part of the high school curriculum. Kids leave my room all the time and say, why isn't this required? We should all be in a class like this. And now they will be. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. This is so important. So here's the issue I'm bringing to the table today. We have our Michigan State standards. And in general, they tend to fit into the classes of Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, or at least that's how we do it in Flushing. That's how a lot of schools do it. And so students take those classes, and then they take a class as a senior. And for students who are interested in AP, many of them know that in middle school. This works great for them. And even for students who get turned on to AP because of something like AP potential, they still are well-served by these standards, and they excel. But this is my other bulletin board. This is for my consumer math kids. Money smarts plus hard work equals a million dollars. I tell kids on the first day of school, you can all be millionaires. You don't have to be a doctor or a lawyer. It doesn't matter what your job is. You just need some money smarts, which I'm going to give you, and you need to work hard. And every day, I reinforce that idea that you too can become a millionaire. So what about these kids? How are they served? I'd like to talk about things I do in consumer math. These are some of the topics that we cover. And I'll get them all up on the screen, and I'll share a couple of the things we do. So in consumer math, we learn all those numbers that come out of your paycheck. How do they come out of your paycheck? Who calculates those? They learn to calculate those. They bring their own paycheck in, they do the math to find out, how did that social security number come from, this FICA? What is that? We learn about budgeting. In fact, we're about to wrap up our, our budget project, which has gone on for six weeks. The students get the job they want as an adult. They get a place to live, they find an apartment. They figure out the deductions from their paycheck. And then they have to make a budget. They have to pay renters' insurance. They have to have food money. They've got to pay for car insurance, or they have to decide they're going to take public transportation. And every two weeks, they get paid. And when they get paid, my basket comes around and they draw something out. And what that might be, well, maybe they won a lottery ticket. Or maybe their car broke down and they have to buy new tires. Or maybe they got food poisoning and had to take three days off of work. All of those things affect that spending plan. So then they have to create a new spending plan for the next time. I've heard things this fall, like, I don't have enough money to make it, what do I do? They've had to get roommates. They've had to get a cheaper car. They've had to look at a different apartment. They've had to get creative because they were dealing with adult decisions. Like, we all do, but they've not had to think that way. Next semester, they're going to invest in mutual funds. Invest in mutual funds. And they're going to watch the progress over the next four months. And they're going to decide, did I make a good choice or didn't I? And when May rolls around and they're about to graduate, we'll see who did the best, who chose the best ones. Every single thing you see on that screen is something they will all be doing in life. And they're learning about it in my class. So again, thank you. But I thought, you know, these kids come in my room, they're not excited about consumer math. They're just saying, ugh, got to take math, I'm a senior. Here I am. So I thought, let's hear from them. So I would like to share with you today what they had to say about their math experience. The first thing I asked them was, how many math classes are you taking? And you'll see, about three-quarters of them only have my class. But there's a good share that have two. A couple have three, some have more than three. Why is that? Because they failed our traditional offerings and they're retaking them. So they're spending their senior year taking courses they didn't like the first time, they probably don't like the second time, and they're taking mine. So that's 26.1% of my students in consumer math who have failed at least one math class. No wonder they're not happy walking in my room in September, right? I also asked them, describe your feelings toward math. Because math should be fun, as Dr. Rice said earlier today. Learning should be fun. This is what they said. Just did it. Not a fan. Stressful and draining. Going through the motions. It's dumb, it's pointless, it's annoying. They're teenagers, right? You can tell. But that's what came out of their mouths when I asked them how they felt about math. This beautiful subject with all these patterns and applications, and that's where they were in October. So that's not good. Things are changing a bit now in December, but that's where they were in October. So then I asked them, so are you feeling more positive about math now? The majority said yes or maybe, which is good. And then I said, okay, well, explain to me what you mean. One said, this class teaches me things that I am sure I will use in the future. I felt the most confident in math in this class. It's a practical class that helps me with things that honestly scare me about the future. Consumer math answers the question. Why do we need to learn this? Because it gives real-life examples and teaches us for the real world. Also, it's a lot simpler than Algebra II and Geometry. Out of the mouth of our teenagers. So why is it that they have to be seniors before they're finally in a math class having success? Why did it take so long? So what does this tell us? Well, a few things. First, unfortunately, three years of their high school math life have been negative in their eyes. They will be those adults, maybe, looking back saying, yeah, I just didn't really like math much. We hope they're not, but that's where they are now. Interestingly, though, my next question for them is, well, what do you think? What should be the math requirement to graduate? And you might think they'd say, just this class, nothing else, or maybe nothing. They thought there should be a three-year requirement, at least. They're on board with math, but they want it to be relevant for their lives. They want to see the relevance, like they just said they saw in the consumer math class. And they want consumer math to be required, which, thank you, it will be. So the thing we need to talk about, though, are those first three years. Obviously, they're having success now. They're doing great. But those three years, how can we use those standards that we have in place but somehow have a better option for these students? So I'm proposing math equity. Let's create and design and propose programs for these students that are rigorous. I'm not proposing to water things down, but that are relevant and applicable, that they can see it. One of my neighboring communities, Grand Blank, has a geometry with construction applications course. The kids are building things. They see why they need geometry because they're building. I have some colleagues on the west side of the state where they're making their algebra classes all problem or project-based. Every single topic they learn, those students know what it's for. And then, of course, financial literacy. But right now, we just have too many opportunities to just say, well, we're just going to follow the AGA textbook series because that's what publishers offer, and that's what a lot of schools are doing. And it's a disservice to our students. Because I believe it would be an amazing world. Oops, I think I skipped a slide here. Nope, it would be an amazing world if every student could look like this one, who couldn't wait to get that marker and run to the board and show us, here's where the federal tax came from. So I would hope that this board would consider options to keep the rigor, keep the standards, but give kids that, that relevance in their math life. So when they get to consumer math with me, they've already had three years of knowing where math is going to fit in their life. They may not actually do it after high school, but they see where it fit and it made sense to them. So I'm going to turn things over to Nanette. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Karen. You are the kind of teacher I wished I had in high school. And it would have made, it would have made things a lot better for me. I'm one of those kids that had that sort of negative experience. So thank you, Karen, for what you're doing. So when Karen and I started talking about the importance of math and helping our students to see the importance and relevance of math in their everyday lives, I thought about, what am I doing to get them started on the right math path? And what can other elementary teachers do as well? What I want to do as a teacher is to instill a love of learning and spark an interest and a curiosity. And here are some of the ways that I get kids to love learning and, more importantly, math. Go ahead, Karen. First, I want to build confidence. I like kids to have many opportunities to try new things and use different methods and strategies to solve problems. I give them opportunities to make mistakes. So when they come in my classroom, they know it's a safe zone, and it's okay to try new things and make mistakes because they are the building blocks of learning. Allowing them opportunities to try and fail and learn to persevere is a very important skill that will help them well after school ends. As you mentioned earlier in this meeting, we need to add the idea of fun and interest into their learning. I want to help kids become curious. I like to plan lessons that allow kids to ask questions and then give them an opportunity to answer their own questions through the use of different math opportunities. These opportunities allow kids to generate conversations with their peers and spark deeper questioning and connection with the content. As I mentioned earlier, I have many math games and manipulatives that students can use during our math lessons so they can construct their own math problems. STEM activities are the favorite in my classroom. We do STEM activities throughout the school year. And here, pictured on the lower left, are kids constructing shapes using toothpicks and marshmallows as part of our Camp Skeeter days. I can tell you, it's a delicious activity. Additionally, I like to use different and many types of strategies in my classroom. I use the Daily Three Math, which consists of three small groups where my students are learning about math in several types of ways. One is direct instruction with me. Another is a small group where they have opportunities to play math games and further build their skills. And lastly, they utilize online math programs to learn math skills in another way. All of these spark the kids' interest and allow them to try new things and have fun while they learn. As Karen mentioned earlier, students often have a negative attitude toward math as they enter high school. So I know it is very important for me to talk positively about the many reasons that math is important and relevant in students' everyday lives. It's important for me to speak positively so that they use it in a positive way. One way I like to connect math to real life is by using project-based learning in my classroom. Project-based learning lessons allow kids to see their part in the real world and how learning can help others. We do a project-based learning unit on recycling that allows students to ask questions about how they can help their world and their community, and if they see a need, and how they can fill it. This helps students build a sense of connection to their community. At the same time, it At the same time, it challenges them to develop a range of academic skills in order to understand and take action on the issues they encounter in their everyday life. And it's fun, too. Making learning fun, interesting, and relevant can spark engagement in elementary school. And hopefully, they can carry this spark into high school and far beyond. Thank you. And Karen, could you advance the slide? I have a couple up, quick updates for my Michigan Teacher of the Year. I recently visited Roscommon School District with a fellow Regional Teacher of the Year, Kathy Lambries. She set up many opportunities for me to observe some of her talented teachers and their students in both the elementary and the middle schools. Additionally, I was able to watch her run a coaching meeting. And I was so impressed with the way she was able to help teachers achieve goals that they had set for themselves and their students. I would love to see coaching become more prevalent up in the UP. We don't have one in our district, but I would love to see that. It was really impressive. Additionally, I presented to CMU teacher candidates in October about SEL strategies and classroom management and the importance of building relationships. I also participated in a panel discussion with the other Regional Teachers of the Year from Michigan. And let me tell you, those discussions were very invigorating. I also participated in a panel discussion with former Michigan Teachers of the Year for Sienna Heights University teacher candidates. Again, those teacher candidates invigorated me as a teacher. I also took part in my very first podcast with Michigan Soundboard, which was a very fun experience. I also applied for the National Teacher of the Year, which was a lot of work, but it was rewarding in its own right. I participated in the Defeat the Label Bullying discussion with the other Regional Teachers of the Year of Michigan and many educators across the country. I also planned several school visits, which fell through by acts of God and circumstances beyond my control. There was a cyber attack. But I plan to try to get back to those schools in the near future. Thank you again for this opportunity. I appreciate all your help and support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Slino and Ms. Hanson. Any questions or comments from state board members? Ms. Lipton?
Thank you so much for your presentation. One of the things that I'm observing through my involvement with the Michigan Promise Zone Scholarship pool of applicants is that the fear of math starts pretty early, but certainly around, I would say, upper middle school. And I really do applaud the creation of an alternative and still rigorous and interesting class for students that do not wish to take calculus. But we're still finding that many of our students are struggling, particularly with what I would call college algebra, which is oftentimes in an intro-level class. And it strikes me that many higher education institutions are perhaps using something like calculus as a proxy for college readiness when there might be other tools to make that determination and allow students the freedom to take a class like consumer mathematics, perhaps even as a sophomore, as a junior, to sort of re-instill that. What are your thoughts on the sequencing? And the sequencing of classes? But number two, also the use of calculus as almost a proxy for college readiness, if you will?
Right. So in terms of the sequence, I'm assuming you're talking about how we handle things in the high school and how that becomes the college sequence. So I teach at Mott Community College. And so I've seen what happens, at least at a community college level. And I'm very happy to say that, at least at that particular institution, they have options for students. So calculus is not the gate at all. So students who struggle have a completely different program they can follow that is still STEM-based, but those courses tend to be more real-life topics. They still get the algebra skills, but it's kind of dependent on what career path they're taking. Whereas other students can go into something more traditional, like a college algebra. So I know at least at that institution, there are options for them. And from the consumer math standpoint, I encourage my students to go there first because financially, that makes sense. To go to the community college, to get some of those classes done, and then go to whatever university you choose. I think things are changing. I think it's very slow. And I know at big, maybe, research institutions, things are kind of status quo as they may have always been. But I'm glad to report that at smaller schools, things do seem to be changing.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Slino, other questions, comments, concerns? Others? Go once, twice? Can't give it away. Tried my best.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Slino, Ms. Hanson, thank you so much. We appreciate you. Happy holidays.
Yes.
Thank you for being with us today. Thank you for your leadership in math education. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, it's 4:05. The next item on today's agenda, as we head into the home stretch, is state and federal legislative update. Mr. Marty Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update. We anticipate that this will go no more than an hour. And will be followed by Ms. Lipton and Dr. Pritchett. Mr. Ackley?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I will be brief, as brief as the legislature was in the lame duck session. Deputy Superintendent Garant mentioned earlier, very little was done in the lame duck, although three education bills were passed and are heading their way to the governor. Two bills that would allow for fifth-year seniors, either in a early middle college or a CTE program, fifth year, to participate in interscholastic or intercollegiate athletics under certain conditions. And then the third bill would require the Department of Education to develop a resource for parents and guardians of children who are deaf or hard of hearing to monitor the child's expressive and receptive language acquisition and developmental states toward English literacy and prescribe requirements that the resource would have to meet. And so those would not take effect until September 1st of 2025. So it's a process to develop these resources for parents and caregivers of students, children with, who are deaf or hard of hearing. And so all of those bills passed pretty much unanimously. There were a couple dissenting votes, but they're all, three headed to the governor for her signature or her consideration, anyway. On December 1st, the legislative committee meeting met. And I will defer to Chairwoman Ms. Lipton.
Thank you. Mr. Ackley, the legislative committee did meet on December 1st. And we were able to discuss two agendas, sorry, two items that we brought before you. And both were on referral to our committee for review and consideration. And those are the resolutions that we voted on earlier. Number one, brought by Dr. Albrecht. Resolution to improve, I'm sorry, resolution on charter school transparency. And the second one was brought by Board Member Tilly. Resolution to improve education opportunity for youth in foster care. We worked on them in the committee. In addition to, along with other stakeholders, brought them before this body. And both were successfully passed. And so thank you to Board Member Albrecht and Board Member Tilly for bringing these, having the confidence in the legislative committee to work on these issues and bring them before the board. That is the, that's the report for this one.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pritchett, anything to share on NAFB?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Ackley? Hearing and seeing none. Any questions of Chairwoman Lipton? Hearing and seeing none. Comments by state board members? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. There've been many opportunities this morning, this afternoon, to speak about Marilyn and Cassandra, but I decided I was going to wait until board comment. So here goes. Marilyn, I have to put my glasses on because I knew I wouldn't be able to do this off the top of my head. For over a decade, it's been over a decade, I've been coming to these meetings. I've had the privilege of knowing you, learning about your family, understanding what your motivation is for life. And that motivation is to make the world a better place. To speak and treat everyone with respect by offering to help their, make their life better. And that's been talked about today as you, I can always count every morning that we would walk in here is, what can I do to make the day better? What can I do to help you out? I will miss your smile, your advice, your genuine interest in everybody's life story, and, most importantly, your professionalism, especially during board comments or public comments the last several months. You're a good and faithful servant to those you have served and who you have interacted with. Go on and enjoy your retirement, but I know you'll continue to make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cassandra, any comments I would even try to make today can't even scratch the surface of your influence in and for public education in Michigan and throughout the country. You are always available to talk, even at nine o'clock at night, Dr. Rice, to discuss, to strategize, or just consider alternatives to whatever the issue is at that moment. Your passion for equality, for fairness, for opportunity is apparent to anybody who observes and, excuse me, and works with you. I'm reminded of a song from Hamilton that you and I watched together several years ago in Detroit. The song is "In the Room Where It Happens", one of my favorite from Hamilton, by the way. You've been in many rooms where discussions about public education have been at the forefront. Some of those discussions have been heated and some of them have not. But you provided the focus. You provided the logical options with the emphasis on each and every student in this state. Because of that, we have a stronger system. We're not perfect. I don't know of a system that's perfect, but certainly headed in a positive direction. It's an honor to know you, to serve with you, because I consider we're still serving, even though you're giving up your ID later on today. And to call you a friend. I know we'll hear your advocacy again, and I personally am looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Judy.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any, any other state board members? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank you, everybody, for the very kind words today. There's a couple people in the audience. My mom's already crying. I never cry until I see my mom cry. Does it every time. So my parents are here. And I believe I see former Board Member Michelle Fecto back there, too. Welcome back.
Yeah, Michelle.
I just wanted to introduce them. And I probably shouldn't have looked at my mom, so.
You have a new board member back there. And you have...
Yes, we do. Mitchell Robinson is with us today. He's going to be joining you in January. And then I believe I see David Hacker coming in the room. And Robert LaFever. And I think Howard Baron is here. I don't know everybody in the audience, so I'm not going to name everybody. But thank you all. Welcome. Glad that you're, you're here with us today.
Thank you. President Albrecht, any other board members? Any other remarks? We, we did a pretty good number on the remarks early in the day. Ms. Lipton?
I would just like to say I had the great honor and privilege of meeting Dr. Albrecht when she came up for, when she was first running for office on the state board. She was the instructor on a fellowship. And I can say, even then, she's been a fierce advocate for the children of this state. I had the amazing honor of working with Dr. Albrecht when I was in the legislature and we were fighting the EAA. And I can say that the children of Michigan have been very well-served by her passion, her fierceness. She's a true educational warrior. And I just thank you so much for your service to the state. And I can't wait to hear all of the great places you'll go. And Marilyn, thank you. I haven't known you nearly as long, but it has been an honor and a privilege to work with you.
Thank you. You, too.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Tilly, to you.
This is so bitter. You know, I remember when I decided to run for state board and reaching out to board members. And you, both you and Michelle Fecto ran me around that convention like nobody's business. So I definitely thank you for the support that you have given and the support that you gave at NAFB. Really appreciate it. You're definitely a fighter. So having you, you know, on, on, on the same side is a good thing. So thank you for that. And I know I'll still see you in the trenches.
Of course.
Definitely. And Mergs, I've already told you, you're the mama bear of the board. You can come back anytime to, you know, I'm trying to negotiate you coming back once a month still. But definitely enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mentioned the EAA earlier and DPSCD. I would be remiss to not acknowledge both Dr. Jeffrey Robinson, the principal of Paul Robinson and Malcolm X Academy, and Carol Weaver, Senior Director of Government and Community Affairs for DPSCD, who have been with us all day. I'm sure that they could attest to all of the things that happen in the EAA in Detroit, as well as former board member Michelle Fecto and AFT President Dave Heger. So also wanted to say, you know, I've spoken in the past about our leadership as board members when community members reach out to us. You know, we have a charge to, to represent them and be their voice here at the table. And I think Park West was a great example of that working. And another great example of that is Benton Harbor. And we went to Benton Harbor earlier this year. And I met with one of the community members afterwards briefly. And she was saying how nobody knows the real story of what happened. And she was, was upset about that. And she wanted me to get credit for it. But I really want to give her credit publicly for it on the record. Former board president Marletta, former school board president Marletta Seitz reached out to former state rep, then former state rep, and now city council member Mary Waters about what was going on in Benton Harbor. And Mary Waters reached out to me. And of course, I was livid and I was passionate about the issue. And none of the board members or MDE was aware at the time of what was going on. I rang the alarm. I rang the alarm. I called and texted everybody and let everybody know about Benton Harbor and the issues that were going on. I reached out to leaders on all levels, probably over 100 people, at least, letting them know what was going on and the help and support that Benton Harbor needed. And Marletta Seitz also met with Debbie Stabinoff, her and a couple of pastors, and Debbie Stabinoff began talking and having conversations with Governor Whitmer. And MDE began having conversations with Governor Whitmer. So there was a lot of groundwork being laid behind the scenes that a lot of people don't know about and didn't necessarily get the credit for. But there were a, a large group of us in Benton Harbor rallying for, for that high school. My concern is there are definitely issues still in Benton Harbor, and would, I would love to have them back, have a report, you know. I think that's something that we definitely need to stay on top of. I know it's on your radar. We've had conversations about it, but definitely would like it back at the table. Thank you.
If I were still here, I would add Muskegon Heights to that list as well. Yeah. Definitely. That would be me.
Understood. Thank you. Anything else from board members, please?
And that was, that was a question of mine, is, is Muskegon Heights, and just hearing more about that, and, you know, how, how we can help. Now, we've been seeing it play out, and so want to get more information on that as soon as possible.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Other reflections? Going once, twice, thrice? It is, board members, 4:20. Future meetings of the board. Write these down, Dr. Albrecht.
They're already on my calendar.
Tuesday, January 10th, Tuesday, February 14th, Tuesday, March 14th, all regular meetings, all at 9:30 a.m. If there are any additional topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify me.
I guess.
Please join us outside the boardroom for a cake and punch...